Ravidian. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February fifteenth workshop for the Village Board of Trustees. The names and faces who haven't been with us before, so I'll ask trustees to introduce themselves. Go ahead.
Trustee Starbuck.
Deputy Mary Woods.
And Mayor Foley.
Trustee Catherine Fatty.
Trustee Laura Bozzi.
And we're here tonight, the main topic of our agenda is hearing the report of the Ad hoc Committee on Community Policing. And then we have some board business to do. Welcome to everybody who's in person. It's so exciting to get people on the phone again. Okay, so first, opportunity to request a vote to add or modify the items. Any changes? Okay, any announcements? Anything from the clerk? Okay. So we'll get right into it. With us tonight are Victor Burgos, who is the Chair of the Ad hoc Committee on Community Policing, and one of the members, Karen Jackson. So this committee, and we also have with us Officer in Charge Larry Burke. This committee goes back to way back ages ago during COVID, Executive Order two oh three, under former Governor Cuomo, when local municipalities, any local municipality with a police force was asked to undertake a review of its police policies and practice and assess those policies and practices based on a number of criteria. This group convened beginning back in June. They met all of their deadlines and delivered all three work products in October when they were asked. We held off calendaring it after, till after the holidays, wanting to not do it in December when folks were away and distracted by other things. So we got through what we needed to get through in November and December, and now we're back fresh to hear from you and your recommendations, hear from Officer Burke, and talk about what's next.
Thank you all for putting this on the calendar. I'm glad we were able to finally get it underway. So as Mayor stated, I was the Chair of this committee. There were five of us, only one member is here at the moment. The others could not make it. But our mandate was pretty clear, you know, based on Executive Order two oh three, we wanted to basically do our work in stages. And at the conclusion of each stage, we submitted a report, and I think those reports are in front of you. So we can go through each of the reports however you like. The first report is dated June eighth, and it was a review of the survey results. The second report was our review of the Lexipol chapters, and we thank the Officer in Charge Larry Burke, who made those available to us and also made himself available. The committee members met with him to discuss the chapters in person, some concerns that they had, and also to understand, you know, what our role was in reviewing those chapters which were, you know, produced by a commercial company, Lexipol. And a lot of the material in there was based on state and local law, based on policies and procedures that were collectively bargained. So it was important for us to hear from the Officer in Charge as to, you know, what particular policy and procedure was in fact collectively bargained, what was law. We are not subject matter experts. We were just looking at it from, you know, a layman's, you know, point of view.
I'd like to talk to you very briefly. For folks who've just come in the room, know that we have packets at the front if you want to have a paper copy of what we're looking at. And if you're joining us remotely, all of the documents we're talking about tonight are online on the Village website under the Trustee tab and Agendas. Sorry to interrupt, Victor.
Yeah, no worries. So the Lexipol chapters, we reviewed a significant portion of them, not all of them, but the ones that we did review, we thought were very, you know, very good. Like, those are the ones we want to eyes on, use of force in particular. So after we completed that review, we submitted the report. And then finally, mid-October, I think October sixth, we submitted our final report. And in that report were recommendations that we had discussed based on the analysis of the documents we had reviewed, the survey results, and then generally, you know, our discussion. So when you gather five people together to talk about, you know, police policies, you know, procedures, we asked them to look at these Lexipol chapters. Of course, that, you know, leads to other avenues of discussion. One of the things that we was born out of these meetings is, of course, you know, we're a small village. Again, understanding what our role was, you know, looking at the Lexipol chapters, looking at the survey results. We couldn't help but have a broader discussion about national policing, you know, what was going on in the country. We had really good conversations about that, and some of those conversations led to some of the recommendations in the final report. And prior to this meeting today, the mayor was providing me with notes based on the recommendations and suggestions that we made. And I see that some of those recommendations and suggestions were broken into two categories, basically the status of them and then the next steps, which I thought was very good. Some of the things that we have, you know, brought forward seems that they were already addressed. Some were going to require more time and, you know, consultation with the union, the Cholmon's Benevolent Association, again, because certain things that we had discussed, again, are collectively bargained. So we can look at it, we can raise our concerns, you know, make suggestions, but if it's collectively bargained, then it's, you know, we need to know about that. And so I thank the mayor and the trustees for for documenting that in this final work, the notes from the final document that we submitted. So I'm happy to answer any questions based on what we've submitted. I'll go from there.
To clarify, the group of policies that the committee looked at first is a first tranche of what had been reviewed and prepared for you after it had been customized for the village. That now will come back with your tenants. Train the staff member, or she's being trained to be the person who manages that database. She will input committee recommendations, and then they'll come before the public and before us for review. So we don't have the meat of them with us tonight, and that's, that is the first set of what will be a series. It's a big chunk of chapters. This is the start.
Great.
Did you want to add anything?
No, that's a big job.
Well, and it's something that couldn't be accommodated in just workload. So it's, it's now we're we're getting to a point where we can manage it and have it maintain more regularity. Do you want to walk through the recommendations for you?
I can do that. So one of the things that we recommended, of course, was the certain changes to the Lexipol chapters. Some of them were easily accomplished that, you know, didn't require collective bargaining, like pronoun usage. And you know, that was something that was easily achieved. I'm stopping Jeff for a minute just to get to the same document that he drews.
There we go.
So next steps, I believe Kathleen, this is Mayor Foley. This is what you just discussed. The staff member's been trained to use the software, which is important. And then after the Village Board of Trustees approves the policies, they'll be made public. So that is, that is good. The next section, Community Relations, we looked at the website and we requested some content. We thought that it would be helpful to have photographs of the offices listed on the website. And it looks like that is something that is part of a broader revamping of the website.
Trustee Bozzi is actually working with Civic Plus. That's the company that designed the template we have now. They are in process of upgrading their product overall, and advised us to hold until the spring, till some more flexible templates are available. I think it makes sense to do, to do that all in one, one push.
My sense though is that if we have any, we're able to gather any materials beforehand, or be able to think about what we want something to look at, that will speed up the process once we kind of picked for the update. So it's helpful to know the recommendations of what, what should be on the page.
And you have a, you have a pretty comprehensive list in the actual, not on the spreadsheet, but in the actual document that you gave, the comprehensive FAQ section, compiled with the advice of, you know, other officers, outlining most frequent or misunderstood questions, the triage requests, the appropriate resources. One of the things that is very obvious is confusion between what agency does, like Sheriff's Department, Local Department, et cetera, and sort of having a roadmap for that on the website where people can answer their own questions. It's a great idea, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, it would just be really helpful, especially during the COVID period where people want to find information online instead of walking into the building and posing questions. So we thought it was really helpful if that FAQ section covered a lot of them. There's commonly asked questions.
And also some of the services that the department provides, like the Dark House program, so people can access them more easily online and submit them online.
Let's go back a little bit with the request for photos of the officer, the name and stuff like that. I'm in conversation with the PBA. That may be a contractual issue, but they are willing. We've been in many conversations with that, and I will further any information that comes across if it's going to be a collective or an agreement or what the PBA is looking at.
Also Larry, what about the policies and procedures? Do they have any opposition to that being posted?
No, the certain, almost all of the policies and procedures of going over are going to be, you know, put together, and it's going to be clearly read hopefully on the website and stuff like that. They were, we sat with them, with the PBA while we were going over most of the chapters, and we were both in agreement on certain things because I did reach out to another police department, and their department went through all the changes without inviting the PBA in. They had to go back and spend many more work hours on fixing it because they didn't even think about bringing them in. Now we're contractual or state or whatever. The PBA was very great on coming in and sitting down with us. And we spent some, a lot of hours getting everything together that we wanted to, still some more to go. And as always, this is a live document. It's always going to be changed as time goes on and laws change and stuff like that.
But to be clear, you said policies and procedures. Policies will be available online, but police procedures would not be, practical information wouldn't be available online for public safety and officer safety purposes. Okay?
And then next, we, the officer name tags. We, we thought it would be helpful to have a full name or at least a first initial and a last name.
That was one of the questions to the trustees. All the officers currently have their last name. Would we be open to adding a first initial as with new hires? Right now, we're a full complement, so it would be a phase in.
I'm sorry, I'm just curious, is there an example of other police departments?
It depends on the department. There are, most of them usually have a last name, but I mean, the first, some have a first initial, it depends, you know, it depends how you, how you want it. I've been in both situations in my former NYPD job, so I don't think there'd be an issue with it at all, putting the first initial on it.
And it'll save the issue.
With a department of fifteen, we don't, we don't have a lot of Smiths. If you did, you could imagine.
I like the idea of putting first name because it makes the feeling a little more casual and friendly.
Yeah, but they're still police. You still have to give them the respect of saying officer and their last name, I would say, rather than, hey, Joe, can you come over here? I don't think that that's proper, respectful.
Yeah, I guess I'm not as familiar with that at all, but from a public standpoint, I want to be friends.
I want to be friendly with all of my officers.
And if they want to offer up their first name, then by all means, you could use it to them. But I think out in the general public, out of respect, I think it just should be officer.
I've seen it both ways since I've been in the village. People call me Larry when I'm in uniform, and I get it because I'm always in the village pretty much. And I don't try not to correct them, but it is, I've had other instances where people have not said officer, and it was, it was in a, like a ticket thing issue. And it was like, hey, you know, Joe, what do you, no, at that point, it's official business. It's awesome.
I see. That makes sense.
Your next item is a very big wish list. It's been talked about in the village for a very long time.
So we can move on to the next impartial officer conduct feedback. So, you know, there was a hearty conversation about this, like just what mechanism is in place to receive complaints, both good and bad? Does it mean that somebody needs to walk into the building? Does it mean somebody, means somebody has to request time to speak to the mayor? Or to one of the trustees or to the officer? And one of the things that, you know, we thought would be helpful is just, you know, making people aware that they can report complaints raised in any form of that, from that, which, and there shouldn't be really any conditions, you know, set. And I think in one of the conversations with the Officer in Charge, he mentioned that if it's a serious misconduct issue, there's a formalized process for that. And that's understood. Absolutely. That should be documented. But at the same time, we just felt that people should, you know, submit their complaints in any form or fashion that, that is, that they're comfortable doing, and that the village should make that, you know, make that a reality.
That's the case now in practice. What we have to do better is communicate about it. So if anyone wants to come to Larry, come to me, come to a trustee, if they want to drop a note in the box, it can be written on a napkin, drop it anonymously, we'll take complaints in any form in order for us to be able to follow up with something that would be, if there were a disciplinary matter, then we would need a formal report. But if there are concerns that folks have, we'll still feel comfortable bringing them to any of us in any form.
And I did, I did state that. I said, you know, maybe in the vision, I see, I will, I will accept any complaints whatsoever. And I will, I will investigate any complaints that come through, either text, phone call, note, whatever comes to the mayor of the board of walking on the street. I will look at everything and I'll investigate all complaints with number one speaking, getting a complaint, figuring out the officer it was, talk to the officer, see what happened at that stage of the game, and against any, get it to a serious nature where they need to come in and do an official, official complaint, I would like to do it that way. So, but I will accept any complaints, not a problem.
I like the idea of making it clear the many ways to lodge a kind of informal complaint, and then, and then also making clear that those don't count for a formal complaint, and then explaining what the formal complaint is so that people know what the process is, and there isn't some kind of missed connection. And so, and the website is the most appropriate place to put that, I'm assuming, when maybe there's some of those likes when we do the update, but just laying that out really clearly for people is important.
Yeah, and if they have a problem, please contact us immediately. Do not go to Facebook, do not go to all these things that go on. Because I say this at all of the monthly meetings, please let us know what's going on, you know, so we can take care of it. The things that go on on Facebook and all the other stuff that goes on is, I can't do anything about it unless you, you're anybody of the mayor of the board doing anything unless it's actually given to us. The Facebook rants are just useless.
Right. But I mean, sometimes somebody, I totally agree with social media, but sometimes, you know, where the smoke is fire. You know, like if you're hearing something, you know, more than once about a particular officer, you know, I think those rants, you know, compiled together, you know, should cause you to, you know, kind of just take a look at something a little closer. Not formalize it, but you know, again, where there's smoke is fire. So I think, again, people, you know, everybody's on social media. If that's the platform they feel most comfortable, we shouldn't shy away from accepting, you know, or looking at social media or content that may be relevant to our police department.
I like the idea of having the hub also support this, have a space that's neutral. I think it is intimidating for a lot of people to speak directly to an officer or even an official and come with a complaint. You know, if it's something trivial, like the officer was rude to me in this way, you know, if they could just write a note or if there was a form that they could write and put in the mail or something, but something so that they don't have to, you know, be, feel uncomfortable coming to officials.
Yeah, I agree.
I like these recommendations.
Great work. Let me share with the hub if they want to go that route too, or anyway, no problem.
But a formal, again, a formal complaint would need to come to you and a written, a written. Okay, information gathering and information sharing.
Yes, and one of the things that we, you know, we wanted to get some clarity on was, you know, how the village department is recording the work that it does. You know, how many, how many calls for service, how many of those calls result in action, whether it's, you know, an arrest, whether it's a summons, whether it's an aided call. And so Larry, you know, Burke reported, you know, that he does in fact keep those stats, which was good to know. And it's a manual system, you know, I've heard, you know, an Excel workflow called a case management system, you know, at times. So it's, there's technology out there that does this kind of stuff. So it was good to have an understanding that that is something that, you know, when we transition to that.
Larry, could you describe the CAD program that's coming?
And this system is coming in that the Putnam County Sheriff has purchased for his officers. He's going to add on, I believe, Brewster Kent and Cold Spring because we were very interested in the program. The program is going to take a lot of man-hours or work hours that I do now, and it's going to simplify it so where I can do the monthly reports in the queue. So anytime an officer takes any type of action, he's going to have to get a number from this new CAD system. It's going to automatically be assigned to him, which it is not now. We have a log upstairs. We have to take the next number down. And it's all handwritten. This will all be done on the CAD system where the officer responds, whether it's an aided call, a call for a blocked driveway, a vehicle traffic violation, anything. It'll all have a number to it. So when I come in, I can just punch up what happened, say, week by week, and they'll break down all calls, what the calls were, and it'll be so much easier for me and less time consuming, and it'll be a record that stays in the system for, I didn't even ask the sheriff that, but it's heard for years and years. So we can look back at different years. I know that was one of the suggestions that was done by the committee that they wanted to see, you know, since 2017, how the crimes were, what, some up or some down, you know, different, different stats on that, which I'll be able to do more sufficiently than I do now by going back and looking at, pulling out pieces of paper from every month that I do and go through all of that. So I think that system is going to, is going to be great for the village to actually track those and be more, more accessible for everybody.
Do you know that system allows you to track where the calls go to or send our officers? Like, for instance, I think there is something in the report about, like, state parks, for instance. So we could get a sense of how many of your officers are going out to the state parks and how often, and/or outside of the village, because I know that mutual services aid allows you or requires you guys to go to any call that's in the area. So I think that kind of data would be really important for us to understand, especially when we're, you know, looking at ways whether we expand or share services more thoroughly in the future. It'd be nice to know, like, what percentages break out, like, are officers doing services specifically in the village or outside?
Well, as I said, the system will have a GPS system in it. So basically now, if, say, there's a call in Nelsonville for domestic violence, and you need additional offers always for those calls because they can be violent, they will call over, I'm backing Putnam County Sheriff number four zero. I didn't have to do that manually. Now, with this computer system, you just hit the button, I'm responding, and after GPS will show where the officer is going to respond and the radiation. So it'll be easier to track that way. As we do it now, I look at the reports for the month, I write down, so officer needs assistance, which is other mutual aid, and I'd have to go into each report to see where it was. This system here will be clear, it'll tell them exactly where they were.
Percentage is like, you know, fifteen percent in Phillips Town, eighty percent in Cold Spring. Okay, that's great.
We don't yet have an intermunicipal agreement for this. This is all in the proposal stage from the sheriff and the legislature. Your understanding, I think, at this point is that the purchase of the software and the equipment will be done by the sheriff's department, and then the subscription service to the software will be covered by the municipality. Is that right?
Correct. Do they do the same thing with the fire departments? Because the new CAD system is not just for the sheriff's and the police. It's for the entire emergency services unit. So basically, new CAD system is in the firehouse, firehouse, police, police stations. You can opt out of it, like I think Carmel did. I'm not positive on that. But they can opt out of it. They may think their system is better than what they're, that's being used, that's going to be coming up now. I can't speak for them. But for us, we have not been on a CAD system for as long as I've been here, and that's over ten years. I know we did back, back a long, long time ago, slowly, like, that's so expensive to do that, where now the sheriff gets called through the computer to the job, and the numbers on my CAD system now, it's an older system, but at least all the numbers and everything comes through, so you can punch up all the information for the job that is at hand. For us, we have to do it on the radio. So we all know the radios don't work too well over here either. So it's constantly going back. I couldn't, you know, back and forth with nine one one, or the county saying, you know, could you repeat that? I didn't, I, you know, with the static, I couldn't get through it. With this system now that we're going to be connected to, where we believe be paying a maintenance fee, and that, that, to connect to the system, but all of the police departments and fire departments, and I believe the P VAC will all be connected to that system. And I think highway departments are going to be involved in that too.
And does the sheriff's department know what the village budget cycle looks like? That we're talking about budget now. And we, I've had this conversation with him on other, on other issues that he needs to know that we have plans on a different cycle than the legislature does.
The initial, the initial conversation I had with the sheriff, and he knows our budget constraints. I asked him for a number. He could not give me one. He gave me, I'm not going to quote him on it, but he gave me a number, and I'm going to hold him to that. And that was, that was a very, very beginning before this all started being, started getting put together. So I do believe, from what I was told, I can give you a round number. I think it was supposed to be around five thousand or less, but I can't, I can't give you that number right now.
So we need an update from him.
Correct.
And one of the things that the committee discussed, and so it's not really immeasurable. So we're talking about, you know, what the officers do on a daily basis, and how is that, and how that reporting in ground numbers and percentages. But one of the things that we recognize is the deterrence value of policing, and that's something that you can't really put a number to. But we recognize that, you know, seeing the police up and down Main Street and then around the village, driving around is a huge office of huge deterrence value. And that's, again, something that you can't really pull a number to, but we recognize that, that, that must be factored in. One of the things too that we discussed is domestic violence reporting. We recognize too that, you know, historically, that it's underreporting, you know, for whatever reasons, everywhere, not just in the village, but everywhere. And one of the, the good things about our police department is that, you know, they, they know, they're small enough that they know the problem areas. They know the problem house. And so one of the things that we suggested, you know, was being able to check back unreported domestic violence situations, check back whatever, you know, mechanism that could be, you know, stopping in and and knocking on a door, or, you know, just a more directed patrol in the, in and around that, that home, or informally collecting information from other neighbors and community members, just to stay on top of a problem home.
Can you give us a sense of scale, Larry, in terms of the last five years?
The reported ones, I had a breakdown. I can't give you the exact numbers for the years, but it's, it's been an average, one, one or two years, it was three. It was one year, there was one. I believe there was another year, there was two, if I'm not mistaken.
Nine over the last five years.
The last five years. And again, we all know that those are reported ones. What I do now is anytime a domestic violence report comes through, I have to review it. I have to go through a few things for the state. I have to send it up to the state. I also notify all my officers that there was, that there was a, there was a domestic violence incident at such address, to make sure they're on the, go past there, they'll be able to look out just to drive, you know, drive through there a couple of times more during the, their shift. So they're all informed to know what's going on. And if there is a, of course, there's an order protection out, that's also upstairs. And it's one of the logs we have that all the officers are notified that there is an order protection out on whatever address it may be. We get them sometimes that come in from different, outside the county, because somebody lives here and they filed it over to, over at the Carmel Court or over in Putnam County, and then we'll get that also. So that is, that is, you know, one of the first things I do when I let them know, let all the officers know what's going on with those incidents.
Is there any way to connect, you know, victims of domestic violence, or is it something that you guys already do to the hub? Because I think that that would be a great resource. I mean, if you're a victim of any kind of domestic violence, you probably need some counseling and support. So maybe including that in part of that process.
On that now, it's going to be one of the processes. They're probably one of the policies you're going to look to put out for the officers to say, hey, at least you need to give a card or a pamphlet to say, hey, there's services for you. I know they do do that in family court and in regular court. If you need anything, they have that for that side. But I'll have the officers do it also, at least, at least informational, is help here whenever you need it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, in a related conversation, post traumatic event support intervention, we've Yeah, in, in a related, um, conversation, post traumatic event support intervention, um, we've already begun work. On this issue and by forging a formal relationship, um, with the hub. We have a grant to work with them in partnership, um, to provide live on-call support to our officers who may be responding to. Um, either mental health calls, domestic violence calls. And we, we have now twenty-four hour on-call support from the hub. So it's not. It's not someone in the car with an officer, but it's someone available to an officer. It is a resource.
There's a lot, there's a lot more resources out there with having the hub on board. And I'm just gonna tell you, you're gonna hear me probably over the next couple of months. We have got constant getting more mental health calls every single week, every single month. The calls are going up. And I don't see any, I, I, I'm just, that's the way it's going, uh, for whatever reason. So people are, are having issues, uh, whether, again, could. Being a lot, you know, locked up with COVID or whatever, or just so many that issues that are coming out now, and it's across the county. But I've seen, I'm seeing it a lot more here than I've never seen. Uh, that's what I'm gonna keep pounding on the next couple of months. The more resources, more help, the more information we can get out there to the people that need it, the better. So.
So you and the executive director have been working on process and procedures, and the next step is to train the individual officers, right? And you are also, can you tell us about the conversation you were having about drug training?
Well, that's one of the things we're looking at too. Uh, again, some of the officers, uh, like myself, have not been in academy, and I don't wanna say how long. Uh, but we constantly do train. We, we, we have online training that, uh, Officer Bulger puts out there we can do. But I thought it'd be imperative that some of the outside agencies, such as the hub, who, some of them may have, have expertise in stuff that we don't have. We're gonna try to schedule a training with them to act, to show us different, uh, different issues that are going on these days. I mean, people may not, uh, some of the officers may not understand what. Uh, forgive me for being blunt, but what people do when they cut, what people do when they have, you know, and they're looking for help and they're cutting themselves and, and stuff to that point. Um, I've seen that, um, those type of issues. So we're gonna get more training with that, with the, the experts that can. Give us a heads up, and maybe we can see it, and, uh, that we may not see the way we see now. And we can notice that one little thing that, hey, there's something else going on here that we don't, we're not properly trained on that, and we can pick it out. And at least get them maybe some help that they need at that point. And that's gonna be an ongoing, ongoing thing. We'll be bringing people in from, but when I talk to the director, we'll, she'll have experts come in. As much as we ask, as much as, you know, we can, you know, handle with the budget wise, uh, to do the training for that. And most, almost all my officers are all for more training. That's all we keep asking them for, more training, more training. So it helps them.
Are they, they're currently carrying hub contact cards for them, right? So they're, so that when there's an incident, they're, they're leaving them behind.
Yep, they're small business cars. We have every, uh, police vehicle in the wheel. So some guys carry them on in their pockets.
Can you give us a sense of, of how many times you've had to tap into this resource, like on patrol, at a, at a call?
In the last past, I wanna say two to three months, uh, it, it's prob, I would say. A couple of times a month, and, and that's more than we've ever had in the past. Like I said, it's getting, it's getting, for me, it looks like it's getting worse and worse on, on what people need. Um, I'm in constant contact with the director. I mean, whether it's, it's written on paper or not, we do, we have phone calls. Hey, I'm just giving you a heads up about this, giving you a heads up about that. Um, we also gotta work around a little bit of, of, of not going against HIPAA. You know, certain things we can, we can say, and there's certain things we can't. Uh, but anything that's foilable, foilable, I can release that. So that, yeah, it's a tough word for me. So that's what we're looking to do. And again, I'm not just doing it with the hub. I'm also asking P VAC, and that's the, the ambulance corps. If they have, see something to come and contact us, I'm, I'm in the process of trying to have a meeting and hopefully once a month with their director or their, their captain. Uh, Nick Falcone. So at least, at least we were on, all on page on to see the incidents that are going on that they might have responded to that. My officer or the village officers, uh, didn't get to, because they were on another call. And is there anything that you guys saw that maybe we can, you know, work to? And again, with the hub and do all, and have them all in collaboration.
Do you have a sense of a particular age group that seems to be more prone to needing this resource in the offices?
It's been, it's across the board. It's across the board for, for us. Um, I'm seeing it. Between the, the, that's the question you're asking. I mean, I've seen it from fourteen, fifteen all the way up through sixty. The people that are, that are, that are need help. I mean, it's, that's what we're dealing with.
So, um, another hopeful element of this is that being connected to the hub and the resources there. They are, they are building much more robust relationships with the county's mental health, um, department. And the agencies, the not-for-profit agencies that lean in across the county and, um, that has been useful. There is, the commissioner is now having. I think they're quarterly, maybe it's monthly, um, meetings of. Some key, key leads in mental health, social services, police, fire, et cetera, to say, okay, who are, who are the folks that we're, that we're all dealing with? In different arenas, but we might not be aware. So there is better communication now about folks who may have fallen through the cracks before, because they were only being addressed by. Social services, they were only being addressed by the police. Obviously, it's all within, has to be within HIPAA protocols, but to the, to the degree that they can share information about folks and make sure they're getting. Resources they need from Veterans Affairs, et cetera. Um, that's, that's happening at a much smoother, um. In a much smoother way than it did prior. It's not perfect. It's just the beginnings, but it's, it's getting better.
Once we're notified of an, of a, of an incident like that where somebody seeks help or needs help. Met, the more eyes you have on that person or that situation, the better, because like I said, it, it's not. It's not Big Brother watching. It's trying to help out the person that needs it that may not think they need it. At that point, and I'm also talking about, and again, it's, it's a term that the police use, and it's called frequent flyers. Which are basically, we keep going to the same addresses, the same locations over and over and over again. Uh, that, that's what we really are looking at too, with, again, P VAC, uh, the Southern County for Mental Health, and where we can all say, hey. This incident happened, you might not have known it, but known about it. This is what I saw. So this is what we're all in constant. And it, it, it's really nice to see a red tape cut, or getting cut for us to help out and do the best that we can.
Thanks. Um, so another area that, you know, you can't live in the village without noticing the influx of. Of people coming up here for recreation purposes. So we, you know, we wanted to have an understanding as to whether there's any kind of reimbursement to the village for. Police services rendered.
The only ones that I know of now, uh, C Street, they pay for the officer to be on duty, uh, for the walking officer on duty on Saturday and Sunday.
Those are boats that come in?
Correct. Um, the only, that's the only one I know of, uh, at this time. I don't know if the American.
It's, um, it's something that's been attempted in the past. Um, we have a new assembly member and a new state senator. And our new state senator was himself, um, a police officer and a firefighter. I'm hoping we might have a bit more leverage, um, there. But it's clear that as Parks frozen expands, there are two park patrol officers for the Empire Taconic Region. That goes from Yorktown all the way to, what is it, um? That near the Duchess County Fairgrounds. Um, say that again, Rhonda? Yes, beyond, it's, uh, Spotsburg, Spotsburg. So it's, it's a large area to cover with virtually no bodies. Um, so. If Parks wants to keep having conversations about growing and expanding, that needs to also include a conversation about, about first response. So the answer is, I think we need to take it up again, um, and the, and the time, the time to do that now with fresh folks at the table is right. Um, and also in light of all of the proposals that are coming out of Parks now.
Only really part of the parks that we're gonna be dealing with is dockside. Um, most of the time when there's rescues, stuff on the mountain. The, the whole thing, police department does not, they'll respond if they're asked for additional help, but most of the time they will not respond. So.
Fire company.
Correct, fire company. But now again, we're gonna have the, the dockside we'll be dealing with in the summer. We'll be on, then we'll really be, you know, talking with them on that.
But you have built a relationship with, who, who is the gentleman from Parks?
Uh, well, number one, Evan is the one that runs, uh, runs all the rescues that I've been with the firehouse. But the lieutenant, I just, I just contacted recently, and I'm sorry, don't have his name with me right now, but we did talk and we're gonna sit down and, and have a little bit of a collaboration on that. On responses if we, if we need to and stuff like that. And he gave me a whole list of rules and regulations that we can use on dockside if we have to.
And we finally, we'll have this conversation later in the evening, but Parks has finally installed signage, um, regarding rules and regulations, including dogs. They were just installed yesterday.
Dogs just now?
Including leashes. Yeah, yeah. So now we have ground to stand on for enforcement. It's, it's, we'll show you a picture when we're, we get to that part. It's their temporary, their new, there are larger ones coming, but at least now there is a sign. Okay. Anything else on that topic?
Um, next on the, uh, on the list was the traffic court disclosures. We had a, a robust conversation about these pre-trial conferences that all have. With, um, persons who have received the ticket and come into the, to the court. Um, we just thought that, you know, it's, it should be something that we look at. You know, um, the mere perception of, that there's corruption, that an officer is having a conversation with someone who's gotten a ticket and may or may not be able to help them. You know, plead it down. We thought it was something that the, the trustees should look at and determine whether, you know. That could be filled with a non-police member, whether it's a junior attorney or whether it's a, you know, paralegal, anyone. Um, obviously, if, if an officer is doing it, I mean, yes, they have law enforcement experience, but, you know, then, you know, we can get somebody who has some sort of law enforcement, law background.
So, so for clarity, when someone receives the ticket, whether it's a parking summons or?
No, a moving summons.
I'm sorry, moving summons, um, or another kind of, I think another example, Larry.
Vehicle, many traffic vehicle, uh, violations. When they do come and talk about parking, a lot of people fight parking summoners. So the officer has to be here to talk to them. So it's, it's across the board, uh, when violation, parking summons, whichever may be.
So when, when the person comes in to appear before the judge, they have the opportunity to have a conversation with the officer who issued the ticket. To negotiate the ticket. And you pointed out, sort of the absurd example of, um, I don't know, a moving violation that got reduced to what?
It got reduced, yeah, to littering to. And, and you know, like the officers are doing you a favor by negotiating, but it just feels weird.
Brought to Larry first, um, and I think that you were immediately supportive in saying, yeah, the, the perception is, is poor. Um, and there is a possibility of it feeling like an intimidating circumstance. And so we reached out, um, the village does not, the village has its own prosecutor. Used to be a service provided by the VA's office, by the county, um, that the DA would send prosecutors to assist the village and represent the village in criminal matters. That is, that service was withdrawn. We now pay for our own, um, another loss of, another loss of county services. So we went to that, um, attorney and said, could you have a look at our volume? Um, the number of tickets that are being processed through the court, through the local court over the year, and give us a sense of what that might cost. Um, so we're not really making decisions tonight, but we did make available to the board and to the public, um, in response to your suggestion, which I think is a good one too. Um, having, you know, a civilian have that conversation, um, with the person who is coming in for a ticket. He estimated, looking at our flow, about eleven thousand five hundred dollars over the year. I like, do you want that slide, Jeff, please?
Just take that back, uh, mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Prosecution from the district attorney's office, they do, uh, felonies and misdemeanors. Uh, we had to get Gil to do, Andres Gil, who is the prosecutor, he does all vehicle like, um. Uh, A U O's, which is an art, they use for a vehicle. So they, the county still has.
So.
I just remember where.
Probably in the second.
Okay, fair, fair question. What's the purpose in the pre-trial conference versus?
If you didn't grow up in New York State.
We're, we're, we've had the moving values and gone to court for it, maybe, um. Uh, you know, what's the purpose of it compared to just going in front of the judge? Why is this?
I will be honest with you, I came from the city. We didn't do that in the city. And that's, when I first came in officer and I wrote something, they're like, oh, you have to go talk to the person and try to, you know, and I was like, what? I don't, I don't understand. So I, I'm with you on that. From what I, from what, what we look at is basically what, you're acting as. An attorney, even though you're not for the village. So basically you'll look at, you'll do the driver's abstract, which means your past history. So if I wrote you a speeding summons and I, and I see that you have not had a speeding summons ever, and this is your first one. I can turn and say, all right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit to the judge that I'm gonna lower, low, I'm willing to lower the summons or low age. Lowering it from a speeding summons to say parked on pavement, which means you don't get any points on your license, but you pay a heavy fine. It's never, it's never done. It's a suggestion. You give it to the judge. The judge is the ultimate decision maker. So I just suggest it and the judge makes the decisions.
And so it's prepared to, and then transmitted to the judge, but the judge couldn't do that himself, or the, the.
And this plea bargaining is, is, it's a normal process. Once someone comes to the court.
Right.
The problem is, is that the, well, the problem that we perceive is that it's an officer who wishes.
No, I, I understand the difference. I just was checking. I just wanted to understand why we needed this step. Before we moved into finding a different person to.
Right. No, the officer has to be here for a court, because the judge is gonna say, I need, the officer has to explain to why you gave the summons and what were the particulars on why you pulled them over. So the judges can't make a decision on it by doing it that way. Uh, and that's what he, you know, he usually does. And that, that's how it's been going on here, uh, where one of the. Last couple of small municipalities that do it that way. Uh, so I'm all in for, and I spoke to the P V A on it, because it could have been a contractual thing. They're in agreement, uh, if we do go with the attorney, they have no problem with that. Uh, but again, the officer will be called in if that person who gets the summons wants to fight it and go to trial. And you'll bring the officer in, they'll come in and they'll, uh, do the trial by the judge.
So we would still have budget implication of, still pay officers to do court security. Um, so it's not, we don't reduce, reduce our expense there. And we would have the additional expenses as Andres's, um, sort of estimate of. How many hours we take for case and what that would translate to, given our volume over the year. So we're going into budget cycle, and this is one of the numbers that we need to look at, um, in budget cycle, if it's something that the, the trustees are interested in considering. So no decision making tonight, just making the information available. Okay?
And what do you do with the respondent who's not speaking English?
The, uh, judge will request a, um, translator, or linguistic translator, and they'll, because both, both for the next, the next trial day, which will be the following month.
The, the, the first step is we call the sheriff's department. Um, the sheriff's department is supposed to have a translator. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Um, but that's, that's your first attempt, right?
No, the first attempt is actually put off, and the judgment calls, uh, court services, and they have somebody on, on a retainer.
On a day-to-day basis, if an officer needs.
Oh, yeah. No, if you're talking about regular, regular, like, uh, walking down the street and somebody doesn't speak, uh, uh, English, and if it happens to be Spanish, and we can get a, try, try and translate it from the sheriff's office or. Try to do best we can. We have apps on our phone that can get us through certain things that we need to know, name, data, bird, stuff like that. So.
And you have also worked with native speaking community members when you needed.
Yes, yes, correct.
We have no bilingual officer.
We did for, for a hot second have a bilingual officer, um, where we, we look for them. Parks come by.
There is a thing called the language line. Have you ever heard of it?
Yeah.
If you're sitting here and you're arresting them, you could do that on speakerphone and do all the questions that way. Yeah.
But that's something that you do already. You, you have access to services already.
We haven't run into, uh, we haven't run into that a lot, because most of us, I have, uh, my broken Spanish that I can usually get through. We get the important information questions that need asked. Uh, but yes, there are, there are services that we can use.
And I point out, it's not arrest necessarily, but sometimes it's people coming in looking for help.
No, but with a cell phone, she could just dial it on the cell phone, put it on speaker and, and to have a conversation through that.
And to, to give you a sense, I mean, I, I am not fluent by any means, but I have enough Spanish to get by. I use Spanish in village hall several times a month. Someone who comes in and, and needs help, um, or is looking for a service. So it's, this is, it's not, that's not just a police. Um, issue, there's, there are lots of people who need help with translation. It's not just Spanish, but that happens to be the one we can help with. Okay, so that was the big traffic log. And, and in closing, you have the big question.
So, I mean, we, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, you know, um, yes, we had a mandate. Yes, we, you know, we had a clear, you know, um, direction, but you, you couldn't really have. These conversations without discussing whether we even need a police department. Um, and that was, I think it was covered in the survey, um, and it was reported, you know, that, yes, you know, people want the police, but. During our discussions, it was, you know, whether we should go a step further and, and put out a referendum. You know, put it to the voters on whether they want the police or they don't want the police department. And in, you know, to counter that, we thought, well, if we had more data. As to, you know, the cost involved in, in farming out police services to the sheriff's office or, you know, um. It wouldn't be, there would, the cost benefit wouldn't be there. Um, so we thought if we had that data, if it was available and we can look at that. I think you could answer that question. Um, and I'd like to say, not everybody in the committee, you know, felt that this was an issue. But again, you know, when we're talking about, you know, community policing and, uh, the ma, the governor's executive order. In light of everything that was going on nationally, we thought it was a relevant conversation to have. And a relevant question to pose to the committee and, and to the mayor. and a relevant question to pose to the committee and, and to the mayor.
So your recommendations were to develop a strategy to impartially educate the public about the cost, responsibilities, and consequences of maintaining or just having the police department. Um, and then, one of your, I, I think it was, one member asked for a commitment to place a non-binding referendum question on the twenty twenty four ballot. There, this is not a small question, um, and it's, it's clear, I think. There may be dissent, but I think it's pretty clear the value of the police department in the village, um, and deterrence is one of them. And that's not a conversation to be had lightly, or a decision to be made lightly. But I think that the questions that you're asking about mutual aid, um, et cetera, and, and funding are ones that we need to have in an intelligent way, um, and maybe that's an ongoing job that the, that the committee can help the village with, is looking, asking the hard questions, the hard, the hard numbers questions, and helping us develop a data set around that to make decisions. I will say that we, I, I get to see a lot of things that, that the public doesn't get to see, um, working with Larry. There are lots of things that happen in the village that you never know about, right, you never hear about them, um, because they're taken care of, because we have an officer here on duty, and we have an officer who can respond quickly, um, and obviously, with privacy concerns, they're not always things we can talk about. But deterrence, deterrence is an element, um, and, and having a department that is locally accountable is for me, as mayor, very important, um, that we have an officer in charge who reports to us and can be responsive to us here. I, that is critically important to me in a, in a population center, um, and we are not just a little village, we're a little village that grows hugely, seasonally, and day-to-day, depending on whether we expand greatly in our numbers, um, and we, and we need that public safety presence. So it's not a simple question, um, and I personally don't feel that it's appropriate to make a commitment to putting anything on a ballot um, without data, because I think that for the public to make decisions like that, they need to be informed. Um, so it seems that the first steps of any conversation like that are providing information, this is the first step toward doing that, I think your committee learned a lot, and now the public will learn a lot via your reports about what goes on, we need to do a better job communicating what it is that our officers do, and what the value, what their value is. And that's, that's on, that's on us as a board, um, and on Larry as a department to be, to be communicating. Others want to add in?
I, I would wonder if, um, your committee would be, and if Officer Burke would be willing to work together to collect data that would be relevant to, you know, that's a pretty big question, that's like black and white, I mean, people push the button, be like, yes or no, on something that big is kind of volatile and dangerous without proper data and information to inform people to make good decisions. And we've seen people make bad decisions at ballot boxes, so I don't think that's a great way to go. Um, at least anytime soon, but I think that if, obviously, members of your committee could start pulling data on specific stats, that maybe, um, either you would advise, or the board could request um, that we would feel was important for the public to know, that we could share, that would, that would be a great first step.
What about, instead of just throwing all the data out there, what if you just asked people what, what they wanted to know about the police department? Because I'll say during this whole committee thing, this is all normal to me, because of what I did before this, but talking to other people who had no idea what some of this stuff meant, and, well, why would they do that? And it never dawned on them why police do certain things. And so now I see a totally different point of view for people who have no clue what goes on, why they would see it as bad, like the traffic violation thing, why they would, why it would look like a bad thing to them. So maybe instead of us just saying, here's what they do, here's what they do, here's what they do, maybe ask people what they think goes on, or what, you know, question, what kind of questions they have to clarify, like, like I got clarification from some people that were shocked by some things that went on or didn't go on. You know, we had, what are the words you use, robust conversations about certain issues that the police can and can't do.
I think the first step is getting our, getting our front-facing information in order, right? Getting all of the basics that you, that you pointed out as being missing, and they are missing on the village website now, and they're missing from conversations. That, that's the first step, is to get the baseline information out. The, 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 the longer question is it is much larger, and there are considerations that range from, you know, that, that they're fiscal, they're, uh, commu- community quality of life questions, they're, it's not, it's not a switch, it's not a yes and no, it's not black and white. And I think it's a sort of a journey that we're on together as a community to better understand what we, well, to articulate what it is we expect of our officers, and for, for them to, um, demonstrate for us what it is that they, that they do, and communicate about what, what they do and what the value is. Your, your role has expanded so immensely over the last year in terms of mental health, and you are asked to carry burdens that are far beyond what police officers, people don't realize how much you carry, that doesn't have anything to do with crime, that has everything to do with humanity, um, and quality of life.
Absolutely, and this wasn't intended as a judgment on the police department, it was intended to make sure that we have those answers for people that are wondering why, you know, another agency can't, can't do the job that the village of Cold Spring does. And, you know, knowing the economics behind it, and the politics behind it, I think is smart. To start compiling that and have some sort of front-facing information on the website, and like Karen suggested, you know, if somebody has a deeper, not a question, we can, you guys can pull up that information, provide facts.
Good, well, are there, before we open to public questions or comments, or anything else from the board?
Yeah, I, um, we didn't really discuss the review of the survey so much in this discussion, and, um, I think you guys had some really very smart observations about the survey and, and the purpose of it, and what was leanable from that survey. Um, and, I mean, I, I do love a good survey, and I find that you can find really good information if the questions are well-done, and, and if the purpose of the survey, um, is specific and, and not emotional and not political. So, um, you know, if you guys could give some feedback on what we gathered from the survey, that would be great.
Sure, so if everyone could turn to the report dated June eighth, um, we kind of went, you know, down the line, you know, um, and we focused on two principal areas, the community participation and the community comments and concerns that followed. There was no methodology beyond these areas that we employed. Um, as I mentioned also at the top of the meeting, we met with officer in charge Larry Burke, who answered a lot of questions that we had based on that survey. So community concerns, um, the numbers, you know, three hundred and eighty-two responses. Um, one of the things that we learned was that you had to request the survey. Um, this wasn't something that someone can just log on and fill out, and so we thought, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry, it was, it was filtered before it began.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we thought that that was, you know, something that could have been done better, um, you know, to, to make sure that we're, uh, we're reaching all of the residents. Another area that we thought was important is that, you know, that, uh, you know, only adults are presumed to have filled out the survey and sent it back. Not, uh, not any teenagers, um, who probably have more interaction with the police than the adults do. So, I mean, how do we capture those, that, those comments? You know, I don't know. But again, you know, the participation was, was something that was key, only approximately nineteen percent of residents participated. And that was based on, we had a look at the twenty ten and twenty twenty census. Um, another thing that the committee noticed, uh, was that, you know, there was no demographics that was solicited. We thought that would, that would have been a, a key data, data point as well. Again, that factors in with the age. And then there was no correlating, uh, analysis on the information. And, uh, again, I touched on the teenage community members, it would have been great to understand what concerns them about public safety and drug use in the village. Yeah, so any questions about that?
There were, there were a lot of restrictions placed on that initial survey, and I don't think that it should be considered inclusive or representative of any number of factors because of the things that you, that you've laid out, that it was, it was, there was such limited access. Um, there was no collection of demographics, so this, your analysis confirms concerns about the survey at the time, um, and also lays, lays the map for future survey work, so thank you for that. Anything else from the board before we? No? Do any members of the public that are with us in the room or online wish to make a comment about? Or ask a question about the committee's report? We need to see that. Anyone in the room? Anyone online? Going once? Going twice? We are grateful, um, I hope that the members who work with you will consider convening when we have the next tranche of policies, and that you'll be participants when we have the actual policies in front of the public, um, this was really, this was really good work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we have a docking application, this is an annual application from Hudson River Slough Clearwater, comes and docks at our dock, takes the public aboard, educates them about the dock's role and environmental, the environmental history of the river, and sailing history, it's fantastic for, for kids and adults to be on the boat, um, it is a one or two days. The third, the four days. I, I love this particular event. And I'm happy to approve the permit, any questions or concerns from the board? Okay, so we're talking about, go ahead, Laura.
Are we approving it and waiving the permit fee?
Yes, we normally do waive this permit fee as a, a not-for-profit. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the application for docking Hudson River Shreek Clearwaters uh, for the dates of five three through five seven twenty twenty-three, and to, uh, waive the, uh, waive the fees.
Any other discussion? All in favor, any opposed? Another annual village event is the fishing derby at the reservoir, the reservoir gets stocked by the fishing fur clubs. The, it's, it's the, the lowest empowerment right by the water treatment set, um, a lot of fun, it is Larry on the calendar for May seventh, the village normally covers the parts of the porta-potties that are put in place. Um, our officers on duty, just with effort control for people who can save groceries, um, and I did speak with Matt Krug, and he's very happy to host again. Any questions from the board?
Okay, did you think of to eat for fish?
I don't know. They're not coming out of the river, so that's probably a good start. Um, okay, so, uh, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the request to hold the kids' fishing derby on May seventh.
Second. Um, any further discussion, all in favor? All right, okay, any opposed? So, Jeff, I'm, I'm gonna ask for your help with some of this, since you and Michelle have had your hands on it most directly. We are coming to the last portion of the, um, so our water meters are getting new endpoints for remote communication for reading, reading water usage and accurately billing for water usage. And we have about forty unresolved counts, people either haven't made an appointment, um, there's a leak that they need to have repaired, or, in a very small number of cases, they have done construction around the meter, which does not allow us to access the meter, so that the endpoint can't be installed. That is a code violation, and that's a different, that's a different follow-up that has to happen, um, the meter needs to be made accessible. We need to make a decision about what to do if, at the end of this next upcoming period, we still have a number of unresolved. Um, and Jeff has laid out options, um, for, for billing purposes, if those endpoints aren't replaced. One is continue to hand-read, this is a huge disadvantage, it's the whole, one of the reasons that we moved to endpoints and smart water meter technology, so that we're not having to send staff to help, to homes. These are inside, they will be inside, obviously, because the endpoints were never, will not have been able to be installed. So it would require making it, contacting the property owner, making an appointment for the staff member to go in, going in, the staff member tracking, reporting, et cetera, it's a big time loss, um, and it's, and it's a loss of efficiency on behalf of the staff, but that is, that is one of the options. Another option is to do estimated readings for these, there are a number of, some estimated readings have been done for some meters for some time, there is room for human error, um, that, that can favor the village or not. Um, Jeff, do you have any comment on estimated readings from your perspective dealing with them?
We don't want to do them. If we underestimate that, when the endpoints to get fixed, someone gets hit with a large bill. And they don't like that, because they are responsible for the water they've used. Or it has worked to reverse, when people have gotten credit, but we don't hear from those people, we just hear from the people who've gotten, who feel they've been overbilled. Yeah, it's something we want to avoid, is having someone manually go in and look at past history and determine that someone has used X amount of calories. Especially with the turnover we're having in the village, people moving in, people out, move out, and consumption habits change.
So, um, the first question, I think, is, do we, well, the first, do we want to impose a fee, which we, our code, our code is silent on this point, so we believe we have capacity to find if they don't do it, um, if they don't do the update, but then also a fee for a manual read, if manual read is, was where we end up. So Jeff, I think what you're looking for is, of those options, manual read, estimated read, or not billing. Are you asking for first the decision on that? Among those options, or are you looking simply tonight for um, decision on fee?
It's just the board needs to decide what it wants to do to resolve these forty, a little bit like, I think it's thirty-seven, thirty-eight accounts now.
And they've gotten two.
They've gotten calls, letters, door hangers, emails, um, yes. And they are persistent, the, the call center is persistent, so.
And are any of these accounts places for which we have not been able to deliver mail, or? Well, thankfully, it's a very, it's, I was expecting the number to be much higher, thankfully, the number is low, but it will still have a staff impact. Um, I think that we need to do everything possible to get people to comply, um, and if persistent communication isn't working, all we have left is, all we have left is finding. I think we also need to be clear that the village is paying for the installation right now. But when Saks is done, the village isn't paying for it anymore, and this was the same, this was the same case when the endpoints were first installed in, when was that, two thousand seventeen? Sixteen, seventeen. When it participated, when, when the service was offered by the village, the village paid. If you didn't, then the cost shifted to you, and at that time, it was um, a hundred and eighty dollars, the cost of the actual installation, plus a fee for activation. So that number would have to reflect what costs are now. And I think an activation fee is appropriate, but.
Yeah, I agree, um, I think anything that, it sounds like the people who are not responding are like shut-ins or something, so I, I don't know what sort of knocking on their door we could do, but maybe.
That has actually been done though. With face-to-face conversations or what do they sell?
It's a variety of, go ahead Jeff.
No, it's. He, there's twenty-one that have not made an appointment. They could be. They could be in Florida for six months. They could be weekend people. They could just be ignoring us. There are some people on that who just refuse the 5G technology. There's a handful of that just, so, yeah.
So. So can Matt provide us, can Matt determine the cost? Per meter now, so we know what it is the person would need to be, or the household.
Hundred seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents.
So how did you, how did you arrive at the a hundred and eighty dollar? In the last round? You were considering not the cost of materials, the cost of labor?
That was the cost of the meter.
A hundred and eighty was the cost of the meters? So it's that much cheaper now? Seventy-five dollars right, a meter right now?
A hundred and seventy-eight.
I heard you say seventy-eight.
A hundred and seventy-eight.
So a hundred and eighty is still accurate. It was an accurate range. I would advocate for a two hundred and fifty dollar activation fee.
And then the fine too?
Well, so that's, so that's, that's the actual act of getting it in. Then there's the question of if you don't get it in, what mechanism do we have to make it? Challenging and uncomfortable to continue to work with your old meter. And that is an option for fines. And also for caught, added cost on your bill.
It says imprisonment.
What? It says it, well, our code currently says imprisonment. We'd be surprised the number of places in the code that say imprisonment.
You would go to jail for just about anything in this village. So don't break the rules.
I'm just reading the last. And that, that fine can compound by day, right? Under the code Jeff?
I don't believe so. I think it was a one-time.
It's a one-time for, for what's the duration? Is it like a? To be.
It's pretty broad.
It's weekly until, or monthly until.
Do you care? Laura's looking to see what the language is.
Um, penalties for offenses or, if there once, you're saying that it's just a general penalty?
It's one thirty, one thirty dash fourth. I think it has to hurt. Yes.
Punishes for offenses. Punishable by a fine of no less than two hundred and fifty dollars or by imprisonment for no more than fifteen days or both.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't say by the day?
It doesn't have a grade issue.
Where do we go to prison?
That would be the justice, undersummons.
We're also talking about having a fee that covers the time, right, for staff to do. The manual or estimated.
Well, there's the installation and there's the manual read.
And so it's, so there's kind of, there's installation, but then these ongoing fees are both like a, the. Continually occurring every time staff has to do a manual read and then there's a fine on top of it.
It's, it is incentivizing you. It's not just covering the cost of the staff time. It's us trying to get the staff to not have to do it anymore.
But I mean, it sounds like.
That is very broadly written. Which brings Jeff, brings Jeff and Matt. In department heads meeting to say, how can we incentivize? This is broadly written. Will the board assist us in establishing a fee structure? For these remaining?
Do we know how much that fee, how much staff time you're using, like what the cost is of that? I don't know that.
To, to the meetings?
There's. The time to set up an appointment, which I'm gonna guess is gonna take five to ten phone calls. Just based on it. And then for someone to go there and do it. It takes five minutes to walk in there, look at the meter, write down what the number is.
But you have to get there.
You have to get there, you have to get the appointment.
It's like a two-hour.
And.
Two-hour per.
There's forty of them every quarter. So that's.
We're short-staffed. We don't have people who can just stop everything and do this.
Well, that's the problem is that if these don't get done, we have.
Can we hire a service to do it?
No, has to be our guy.
And it's, you have to be someone who's filled in reading your meters.
But you still have to pay.
You have to pay. So then the point is, you were given an opportunity to opt-in, the village would pay for it. If you're not gonna do it, then. You need to pay on top. So my, my, my recommendation would be that we. We make clear to these folks that they have through these days, attempt to make clear again for the village to cover it. After that. The caught, the hundred and eighty dollar installation plus a, I would propose two hundred and fifty dollar activation fee. To have it installed themselves. If they don't do that. Then quarterly, they'll have a surcharge on their bill of X amount. Because they have not complied. And it's, the question is the X amount.
Yep, I would agree.
And our code, the code currently has two hundred and fifty, which is for, generally for offenses. So that seems like a defensible place to land. Okay, so.
So quarterly fee of two hundred and fifty dollars?
How does that sound to you from your perspective working with? Water bills?
I'll put in my resignation charges before I have to deal with the people too. Don't want to complain about that. That's.
If you think it's too high or too low.
We're looking for, we're looking for guidance because you're the one who deals with it.
And now they can make a phone call complaining about how high it is, but they're not doing the work to get, take care of it.
It's hard. You're gonna charge someone a thousand. You're charging someone a thousand dollars a year.
That's the point. I mean, that's the point. If you don't do the meter. If you don't, if you don't, if you're not willing to, to, to engage in the, in the community venture of. Water service, this is, this is the impact.
Are they getting bills on all those forty people or?
And, and we would send a warning. I would, I would say that this should get some kind of, it should be in writing beforehand saying like. These are the, these are the fees that happen at these points. Since this is your kind of final notice, make it really clear. And then on the bill, have it say like violations or endpoint, whatever. I mean, I, I just think we have to.
So this is what I think that, this is what I think that's. So that this is irrational. Right now, we're, we're throwing ideas around, right? Jeff's given, come to us with a. First round question, which is, how do we deal with these forty? It sounds like we have consensus around. Billing them for, making sure they understand that, that any installation after our, this period is on them. And this is the consequence if you do not. Do it after that. Why don't we? Why don't we, why don't we make an actual? Resolution and proposal and think through in the language that you're talking about and bring it back to us, bring it back to the board next week for final approval. And Jeff, do, what is, what do you? Go ahead.
Have they gotten registered letters, like that they signed and they, you know they got them?
Well, not all of them because they don't, if they have.
You gotta get like a return, receipt requested, so you know they got it.
So that the, so that the next, the next, the final warning letter, have they gotten return? At all? Return request?
It could be sitting. But seven.
We have not, we have not sent return receipts. We have not, no.
So maybe that's how this, that's how this notice goes that way.
Gotta make sure that we actually got it. Um, the. The end date is the twenty-fifth. Right, February. So that's next week? So these letters would have to go out.
Well, they've already, they, they had a follow-up letter, not a registered letter, but they had a follow-up letter two weeks ago. And they've had calls in the meantime, calls and emails where we had email addresses.
Their house was on fire, they were dancing.
Well, some of it, some of it is, some of it is. When it's a, when it's someone who doesn't want 5G in their house, I don't, you know.
There's forty of them?
No, 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 but there are, there are a couple in that category.
And I can understand that people are away for the winter, but we get that. Weekenders, I get that.
Your sense is that two fifty, too high? I'm, I'm looking for guidance on this because you. You are, you and Michelle are dealing with more. The, the water bills and seeing what. Amounts come, or people are, people are.
Not a decision for myself or for the accountant to be making. This is.
I understand that it's not. What I'm asking for is, so I put forward a range and you, your, your response was, I'll resign. So, so what is, so a sense of, a sense of a reasonable range would be, would be.
First of all, I, I'll resign with sarcasm, but it's a reaction to charging residents. In our community, a thousand dollars a year.
Who have not been willing.
Personally, I'll remove my hottest clerk, be a resident, go sit over there. That's ridiculous. Put my clerk back on, I'd now go. That's for the board to decide, but. I, I think it's way too steep.
So, but if the goal, if your goal here, understood your goal to be to, to. The goal to be, not you Jeff, the goal to be, to get these folks to come into compliance.
The goal is not to get a thousand dollars from them. The goal is to get maybe two fifty and they come into compliance.
The goal is to get them to come into compliance so that. We're getting readings and we get these forty people.
Right, and to date, they've had multiple contact points, multiple opportunities and haven't done it. So.
Does the village have any legal standing? Can we do, you know, can people say, no, I don't want this? Is that an, is that an option that, that like?
Sure, the option is that we then have to do manual reads. Right, you need to cover the cost of the manual read.
Okay.
So ultimately, if after this process and, and established, noticed of an established fine. If they don't. Upgrade their endpoint because of 5G or whatever reason they continue to refuse. The old meter can stay, but we have to do a manual read or we estimate. An estimate certainly drops off staff time. It, it creates.
With the estimated, do you do an annual reading?
You want to explain how the manual estimated reads get done, Jeff?
Quarter for. If it endpoints that work and anything we don't have reads for. We go back and look at the last few years for that same quarter. So this next billing period will be January first through March thirty-first. So we will go back and look at previous usage for that same time period of the last three or four years. Now, if someone has continuously had to have a manual read, then we're making an estimate based on an estimate. So it's. It's, it's not, it's not, it's far from perfect, but it's.
Back and read it eventually so you get the idea of what was off.
Like you justify it, you mean?
Right, so the same way like, you know, you pay your income taxes, you, you may do quarterly payments and if they're off from last year. You might have to pay more at the end of the year. Does it balance out that way or we?
Yes, no, but what, when it gets corrected, when the endpoint gets fixed or it's actually working. Then we'll get an actual read and it goes back and it recalculates. Looks like your consumption over that period goes back to when it stopped working. What's the actual consumption? If we overestimated, you'll get a credit. Or as the case will usually tends to be, we underestimated and for one quarter, you're gonna pay more.
It would be, it would be my preference not to send staff into the field, but to do estimated. Thoughts from other board members?
We, reestimates and then do an actual annual.
Or it's like Central Hudson.
Yeah, well, and then people will complain about that when they get slapped with a, you know, high bill.
So then your option is to come into compliance with the endpoint.
Right. And then it's on you.
You know, one of the things that I noticed, my, my landlord, if I had a leak, she told me my water use, she was up. Can you actually look at the houses that don't have the endpoints and see if they're using water? Maybe they, people actually are away.
Nope, because we don't have the endpoint.
No, but I mean, the old, the old. System, I mean, I, my.
Those readers aren't there anymore.
That's, that's the problem, right? The technology has, has, is moving ahead and we have. It's eight twenty-six and I'm mindful that we have folks waiting for other topics. Would, sorry Jeff? Um, so it sounds like. We. Have consensus around estimated readings as opposed to field readings. Communication around what that means for you as. The bill payer, that it might, it may or may not be accurate and there's going to be a, there's going to be a justifying, a bill that justifies difference at the end of the year. Right? Is that correct?
Yep, and we'll soon discuss the two hundred and fifty activation fee on top of.
Right, but let's go, let's go one.
You know, just clarifying, so three times. Estimated reading and then, and then a, and then a.
And then in terms of. If you don't, if you don't do it while the village, while it's happening on the, on the, the public dime. Hundred and eighty and I proposed two hundred and fifty activation fee. Okay, and then the last question is. Ongoing, ongoing fee if you end up in that last category. And it sounds like two fifty is too high.
Maybe it's an annual two fifty? So when you get that reading at the end of the year and it's off, but actually that would be even more painful for people.
Well, that's the point.
We can't make it hurt so bad that people complain to Jeff.
Okay, so now we have an alternate proposal.
Well, I think the annual one, two hundred and fifty annually as a fine.
As a quarter.
Yeah, rather than quarterly.
Is that unreasonable?
Yes, that's me, others.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jeff, does that give you the information that you need? Have we answered all of the things that you were looking for?
By the bush, yes. Is this one going to be annual or just one time?
What do you mean annual or just one time?
Uh, so if they don't install.
And, annual.
It's an annual.
That was a twenty. Hundred and fifty dollar annual penalty.
This is for the public that's sitting in the room wanting to stab your eyes out. This is what workshops are. It's our. At the table to figure things out in public. So you know, right, so you get, you get to see the, the, the inner workings, which sometimes are. Smooth and sleek and sometimes they're painful. Okay. So you good with that Jeff? Have you landed where you need to start? Okay. Update on dock side. Do you need, do you want to vote?
Do you want to vote? Or I would really recommend that. Well, just go back on the agenda. And, and, well, in two weeks via resolution.
And can you include in there's a letter by, it's a letter by certified mail? Yeah, as part of that proposal.
We'll compile it and have it on the agenda for next time. Okay. Uh, let's get direct commission, sorry. As it turns out, to some people who the direct commission interviewed and recommended to us. Neither of them are citizens and that is, it was qualifying. In state New York, to be a public official, you have to be a citizen, even if it's the direct commission. So we are now looking for. We are not able to appoint them and are looking for, still looking for two more. I, I know that Jeff Amato met with. An interested person this week. I'm waiting for him letting us know whether that's a go. If anyone has other recommendations or if anyone in the public. Is interested in serving on the direct commission and is a citizen, why, please be in front of the clerk. Okay. Dock side. The photographs from. It's been a lot of it. There's been a lot of, um. Attention in the last week to dock side. Wait, just wanted to do an update and make clear. What it is, the village's role is at this point. Um, in two thousand eighteen, the village entered an agreement, um, with Parks, Parks owns the property. Um, the village manages it, it is a. Uh, the document is available on the village website now in the trustee section under the dockside tab, so you can read it for yourself and all of its detail. It is quite one-sided, um, we have a, we have management responsibility, but not a lot of ultimate. Decision-making power without. Parks approval, um. And. Uh, Parks has a lot of capacity to do work down there on their own with, with not a lot of notice, so. The. Twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two shoreline stabilization project was a joint project by the DEC and Parks. It's a demonstration project for inundation. Planning, a lot of folks have said, why did you build at sea level? It's, of course it's going to flood, well, that's the point, this is. This is a fill area of the river, there are a lot of them, these formal, former industrial areas, they do wash away and it was washing away, if you. Have a look at, um, also on the village website under the dockside section. From their presentation a year ago, photographs of existing conditions, um, and what had been washed away. Um, and this shoreline stabilization progress, uh, project is to make the shoreline more resistant through flooding. So it's meant to be flooded and not drag dockside away with it, which is what was happening before, so now there are stabilizing. Tears of boulders, um. It is intended to have native plantings, it was covered in, um, knotweed and other invases. Along the shoreline and there were trees that were unhealthy and needed to be removed, there are new trees that have been planted. This project happened at a time. That became inconvenient because we got hit with a drought, so a lot of the plants didn't make it. Um, a lot of the plants that they put in the spring didn't make it, um, and then we had a tremendous flood at Christmas time and the plants were pulled out. That were pulled out by the flood. When the, when plants have an opportunity to establish themselves and establish root systems, it will be more stable. Parks is committed to coming back in the spring and replanting and reestablishing. There are. There is a video about this on our dock, on the trustee section under the dockside. Portion where they explain the, the logic of the, um, shoreline stabilization project. Um, it's helpful to look at, but that was, that was Parks, not a village project. Um, what we are required to do under, under. Our contract with Parks is coordinate and comply with reasonable requests by the state, by such official. So Jeff, if you could go to the sections of the code, so this is dockside today or yesterday. That's okay. So that fencing you saw there, that was, that was temporary fencing, trying to protect the, the grass seed. Evan Thompson was on the site yesterday and pulled that fencing and he added new signage, we just need to get to the photographs. We are. I'm sorry, the contract. And we'll go back and look at the photographs. So comply with all regional requests made by state officials, but one request is. We've been asked to hold on removing the storm debris from the Christmas storm because the ground is saturated. Um, and they're concerned about heavy equipment damaging the installations and want some of it to be done by hand. Evan Thompson has met with our roadways and facilities crew chief. Um, and they've determined what things they can pull out now, but the majority of it is going to stay a little bit longer from the storm debris. Um, until the ground is less saturated and they're less likely to sink and do damage in the equipment, so here under. I, item seven, we are to require with all, comply with all reasonable requests. So that is a reasonable request, please don't damage the plantings that we've done, please wait until the ground. Be drier before we pull out. That's where we are with cleaning up from the storm in December, but on a regular basis. The rack, if we go to page nineteen of this, Jeff, Jeff. This shoreline project is intended to have, um, to be a moving shoreline, things will wash up. On the stripper will wash up and go out with the tide cycles, um, it's meant to be movable, it's meant to look different. Um, as the days pass, it's meant to reflect the tides, we actually are on a regular basis, not in large storm time. Prohibited from removing natural shoreline, shoreline debris. And there it is, right there in the contract, so you're going to see grifford come in and out, it's meant to be there, it's meant to be, it's meant to be. Sat upon, moved around, looked at by the public, someone has built a little enclosure there now, that can look at pictures, but, um. We're not actively removing it, what we are actively removing and the highway and roadways and facilities crew does every two weeks is garbage. But remember, it's a tidal river and things wash up every day. So even if our crews are down there every week, there's always going to be something, so I would say to the public, if you see things, rather than. You see objects that need to be cleared, you think they're dangerous or concerned, they're too big for you to pick up, please call us in the office and let us know there's something that's of concern to you. If it's something small. It's our park, right? We're all villagers, pick it up, there are garbage bins at the outside. We're all, in, in the, in the management job here as villagers for taking care of the park, there's the structure I was talking about that someone has built. And the state is allowed to inspect, so the state knows what we're doing down there, Evan Thompson is on site quite frequently, um, yesterday he was there. Picking up garbage, we had a conversation about the gate that's pending. They let us know if they see things that we're not doing properly on the site, right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for. Um, in the spring, there will be training of the roadways and facilities crew, um, how to manage the native plants. Um, how to, what it is they are to be removing and not. And they will work as a team with parks. So right now, the park is half done and what you see is halfway and it's going to look unfinished. But it is also, as things grow in, going to be beautiful, um, and it's, uh, it's a team effort to keep it beautiful. Um, lastly, I was talking about signage earlier, I think there's a photo in there. The contract states that this, um, Parks has exclusive right to install signage. Temporary signage was installed yesterday. At near the entrance. It does include notification about leash, leashes, the dogs have to be on leash, so now we have enforcement capacity, Karen Jackson is our. Dog officer for the town. So there it is. Um, it's right, it's right near, um, the property line. There has been discussion about a gate, um, Parks had proposed a gate at the property line, which is. Inside the park, that first house at the entrance to dockside is private property and. There is an easement for the village and the state to cross over the road and the public, that, that lawn area is private. Belongs to, to Laura Bergman, um, the state wanted, sorry.
About a hundred feet, right?
About a hundred feet, the state wanted to put a gate. Back into the property at the property line. Um, and to keep vehicles from driving around it, a split rail fence. Obviously, that's a big object than what had been an open view, so we had a meeting on site yesterday. To have that conversation and help, help, um, Mrs. Bergman advocate around that issue. The state is looking at now moving it just the gate, not installing a fence, not installing any boundary. Objects between Ms. Bergman's property, she likes the openness, she likes, she likes being able to see the view and so does everyone else. But we do have to control vehicular access, so they're now reworking the easement. To include a gate closer to the actual traffic entrance. The concern that Ms. Bergman has and I think every, that we all have was folks being able to drive in and then use her areas parking or turnaround. Um, so we'll know about that soon, um, but the, but the proposal to put the fence further back is now off the table. Gladly, I'm glad that it's off the table.
Well, well, just to add, I mean, um, in the meantime, there will be some interim solutions that are not the prettiest. You know, there'll be cones maybe or a chain.
Get the chain today, a yellow chain.
Chain across the, the entranceway, the way there kind of has been for a long time anyway. But that is not the permanent solution, it's just what we're doing well, they work out the easement agreement.
To get the gate. Okay. Um, that's it on dock side. Okay, now I imagine everyone who's been sitting here, potentially sitting through water meter discussion. To get information about Pure Trail, I just wanted to give a quick update on, um. Our recent communications with Pure Trail, Spirit Trail team and park officials. Um, just want to be clear for the public record, Pure Trail is not currently under review by the village board or by the planning board. There's no application before us right now. So there is not an active, there's nothing, not an active application that we can respond to or ask you to comment on. To date, one portion of the project has been declared to have a negative environmental impact. And that's the breakneck connector, it's the, the bridge that will go over, it's supposed to go over the tracks to connect people from one side. To the new trailhead. That portion of the project, and I'm, I'm using quotes because it's, it's a term, that portion of the project was lawfully segmented. Um, under the state environmental quality re-review act, that means that the state determined that that connector had independent utility, so. If only that bridge were built and none of the project, none of the rest of the project happened, the connector would still have. Independent utility and that was based primarily around. The siphon building that's there, part of the aqueduct system, you know, we have them sort of. All round, all round Phillips Town, that siphon building, DEP said was not accessible, um, and that this. Connector, this bridge would help them get to that building to maintain it, and that was the basis for. Um, the primary basis for, for the state to segment that off, to lawfully segment that off. That began in two thousand sixteen, the. FEAF, the final environmental assessment form for that portion of the project was just released in December. The village was not named as an interested or involved agency for that review. So we did not have any formal role in the breakneck connector. Review. So when that review, when that documentation was released at the end of December. Um, I asked the village attorney to review it and to identify any concerns that the trustees should have in mind. As the review for the larger project comes before us, um, that, that's going to help us and the public. To identify ways that we can be proactive in our advocacy for the village as the larger project develops. So currently. The project is being reviewed broadly and generally, um, the fear trail team is writing a draft. General environmental impact statement, so that takes, takes the big look at the whole project. Um, and that's based on a scoping document that was approved in two thousand seventeen. And I've raised a public session before, as have other board members, concerns that that scoping document was written before. The master plan was quite. Heavily modified. In the last year, twenty twenty. Um, that is available on our website, it's available on the Fjord Trail website, but that, that is a point of concern. Um, that the scoping document. Is so old and, and not up to date with the master plan. So there, um, we need to be sure that we are actively advocating. To make sure that things that concern us about the change project are reflected in the actual. Environmental assessment, um, and the, and the DG EIS, to do that, we need, we need to be documenting it. So I want to make clear that there's, that there are a few important differences between the breakneck connector review and that larger. General environmental review for the whole project. First, there's already a positive declaration under seeker for environmental review. So that means that the deeper dive is required on this, on the project generally and potentially on specific aspects. Um, for site-specific aspects, like dockside, like Little Stony Point. In this review, the village is identified in the scoping document, um. As potentially involved or interested, so that means that our local land use regulations and our comp plan. Have to be considered in design project review and that we may have discretionary determinations, but here's where it gets tricky. So New York State is the sponsor for the larger project, under breakneck connector. Hudson Highlands, Pure Trail was the project sponsor, Parks is the sponsor for the larger project. In the overall, and that's a really important distinction because with a state agency as sponsor. Parks can potentially make a stronger argument that the state is completely exempt from local land use laws. And that no bal- and no balancing test. Might be required, the balancing test says the public benefit from this project outweighs the, the weight of the local land use laws. With the state identified as the project sponsor, the requirement for that balancing test. Is not there with the same force. So that means that the village could be left with little or no say in outcomes. And that's the worst case scenario, in my view, that's the worst case scenario, and I think, I think we all share that view. So being at the table is critically important, so the village is considered carefully in the larger review. Um, and that strong and appropriate impact mitigations are in place. So to that end, trustee Starbuck and I met with Fjord Trail and Park staff on January twenty-seventh. To attempt to clarify the roles and accountability for the nonprofit developing the master plan, Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail, HHT. And the state agency sponsoring the project, Parks. We pointed to the confusion among the public and local officials about who's making determinations. And to whom they are each accountable. Um, we requested to be provided with the contracts that establish the legal relationship between HHT and the Parks. And we put forward as a model, the legal, legal document that guides the operation of the public, private partnership. In the central parks, center of our conservancy. Such an agreement. And transparency in the roles is really needed here, um, and for the Fjord Trail. For, for the overall partnership, so we've made that request and we're awaiting response on that. Um, and in that session, we also looked ahead to the coming review process, this larger overall general environmental review. So. This looks like a quickly moving object, right? And, and in some ways. The marketing is very beautiful. Um, and it looks very complete and it feels, in looking at the documents, as if it's complete, but there's still a lot of planning. To do and there's still lots of places where, where the public, um, and municipal bodies can participate. In that decision-making. And there's still a lot of research and planning that needs to, that needs to happen, so from what we can tell at this stage, it looks like. That draft general environmental impact statement won't be released until the end of two thousand twenty-three, I don't know that for sure. Um, Parks and HHT need to confirm that, but you know, we, it was originally talked about as being ready in November and that's clearly. I mean, we're, we're in February, it's not, it's not a possibility, um, so we'll need to get clarity on, on when, what's, what a realistic timeline is for the completion of that process. Um, back in September, we had a joint session with the planning board and the village board with Fjord and Parks and we asked them. To identify likely engagement points for village leadership and for village residents. They did draft a proposal, it's, it's on our website, um, it's called the, I think it's called the engagement matrix or some, it's under, it's under the Fjord Trail tab. That's a draft, um, we're advocating for it to be more robust. Um, and we hear, we do hear the public, um, that the sessions that you've had have been structured. Um, and that you're interested in being able to make, uh, more free-form response. Um, that is a message that we are communicating. So the way they're breaking this up, if you look at that document on the website, you'll see they're, they're, they're breaking the development of the DG EIS into topic areas. And the first one was parking and shuttles, and so that was the experience that you had, there were two. parking and shuttles. And so that was the experience that you had. There were two sessions, one visitor management and one at the firehouse. Other topic areas will be things like routes through the village and wayfinding. So we need to make sure that village concerns and needs are addressed in in each of those topic areas. So the next step is for us to provide written, written feedback requesting that. The village attorney and I are preparing a draft, that draft letter to the parks as project sponsor, following the outline of the scoping document. The scoping document is also on our website. And that document is critical because it determines the boundaries for review. It's basically a a table of contents for the draft general environmental impact statement. So we need to make sure, given where this was approved and where the project is now, that the roadmap for the DG EIS is has all of the potential impacts for the village within it, so that all of those potential impacts are included in the review. And we have, we feel like we we have the information we need. And and for all of us, that includes budgetary impacts and financial offsets from the developer. And I think it's it's legitimate to use that sound. We're in the range of a hundred million dollars on this project. That's that's a, that's a major development. And I think we should expect the same amount of information that we would from any developer. Even even a much smaller number, we would ask those hard questions regardless. So I'm hoping to get that draft delivered to the review, to the to the trustees for review before it's submitted. I'm hoping to have it done for March first and we can review it in public session and send it on up. Any questions from the board first or comments?
Some of the good reviews.
Thank you. There you go. Okay, the members of the public, so if you could state your name and address. And we have a three-minute limit. And I would just ask you to please remember that we're all neighbors.
Susan Peel, twenty-three Fair Street. And I was just wondering.
Stop first thing, I'm sorry, I just want to start the timer, so.
You want to get all full, full three minutes, right?
Yeah. I won't need it.
Okay, go for it.
Anyway, first of all, thank you for that great review. And I just wanted to know what kind of input the board would need at this point from for your letter. Like, would it help if we put letters forth for you?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And are there any things in particular that you would look for that would help you?
I would say, have a look at the scoping document, which is available online. See where you think there are areas of gap in your own areas of concern and frame your letter out that way. Happy to have, happy to have that.
Right, okay.
So you can send it to vcsclerk@coldspringny.gov.
Actually.
Sorry. Got it? Okay.
It's part of the comment, part question.
Okay, first your name and address.
Andrew Hall, twenty-three Fair Street. So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the board. Actually, first of all, I'm going to say, I haven't been to a board meeting for a long time. It's nice to be here. Nice to see everyone and be part of the process again. So I wanted to thank you all for hearing the residents' concerns about the proposed parking plan on Fair Street and after taking them into consideration, being responsive and willing to make a change with regards to that. Thanks especially to Elisa, because I know that was one of your things we were taking care of. And it sort of helped me to reaffirm, like, the sense that local democracy works. Second, I've noticed in the last couple of days, some NYSDOT traffic counting devices installed on Main Street and Fair Streets. What's the story behind those who requested them, who in the village authorized their placement? What are they being used for? And then certainly on Hudson Highlands your trail. I mean, I appreciate the work you're doing. It's very complicated. As I understand it, the village board lent its original support of a connection between Cold Spring and Breakneck Ridge to the idea of wayfinding at a sidewalk along Fair Street to Little Stony Point, primarily out of concern for pedestrian safety.
Can you just, can you, there have been some, there have been several segments of time and several village boards. So can you be clear which period?
Twenty thirteen, I bet it was. They voted, the village board voted to support the town's application for funding for parking lot improvements, Little Stony Point pedestrian crossing.
I know what you're talking about.
And first three sidewalk and wayfinding. As we all know and can see, a lot has changed since then. The latest plans in the two thousand twenty draft comprehensive plan, which lacked any disclosure by the pure trail as to specific plans for the dockside entrance or potential impacts, envisage a vast infrastructure project, not the ones we just talked about, a world-class linear park, in fact, superimposed right on our tiny village. To best, to the best of my knowledge, that is not the plan the village originally supported. In view of that, is the board willing to withdraw its support as an agency on the current two thousand twenty draft master plan? Or failing that, at least clarify, reconsider, or suspend its current support of the pure trail in such time as, until such time as it has fully heard the voices of all local residents? And in order to do that, what are the mechanisms by which residents can voice their concerns? And is the board willing to convene some kind of public hearing on that matter? I know just as we were talking about the the AdHoc Committee on Policing, that you'd mentioned, say, like, developing a data set to make decisions. So is there a process that can take in all the voices of all concerned citizens?
Help me remember all of the questions that you asked, because you asked a lot. So let's go back to, your first one was about DOT. I have asked, it was DOT installing them. It was DOT installing them. I have not had an answer yet as to why. The road crew did not know why. I have sent an email to to Nikki, the gentleman who's been our lead contact at DOT. They were at Fair Street and the primary intersection. I mean, I I assume that that's, that it that is related to accounts for that, but I don't know. So I can report back on that. I have asked the question.
Because those roads are under their jurisdiction, they can do that without consulting with the village?
That, that's, that portion of Main Street is a village road. So, so obviously, I, we all thought, well, what, why, why are we counting on a village ride? It may be part of the study. I don't know the answer to that yet. But I, it is not a village initiative. Okay, so that was the first one. And also, we will, we're taking comment tonight. I will answer your questions the best I can, but we're we're not going to do a whole debate of your trail tonight. Okay, so the next thing was about the the sidewalk that's here unfair, right?
When, when the village lent its support to the pure trail back in twenty thirteen, it was based on a limited set of ideas and initiatives. And since then, then, in the last ten years, it's morphed into a large infrastructure.
That two thousand twelve, it was part of a, part of a grant. It was a study to look at adding sidewalks to Fair Street. It was abandoned. My understanding is that it was abandoned partially because of concern of loss of field space at Mayor's Park and public feedback about that. But you're right, that is, that is one of the, that was one of the first iterations of the proposal.
So my, my question really is, when I look at the two thousand twenty draft master plan on the state agencies, it says Cold Spring. And it's there by virtue of the fact of the, the decision that was taken in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen to support what was the outlines of the project at that time. Here we are. It's a very, very different project that's before the populace. So is the village willing to reconsider its support of the project until such time it's collected data and heard from people and made decisions about what they think, whether they think it's appropriate?
So it's a, that was a particular, that was the process that you're talking about in particular in two thousand twelve was related to that particular grant project. So I want to make clear that that wasn't when the village board voted on that. It was on that project and not a larger pure trail. They were asked to look at the sidewalk on Fair Street. They were not looking at a larger project. So it's not, the village board didn't approve or didn't consent to a larger project that has now changed. That was specific to that Fair Street sidewalk. Right now, we, as I said at the beginning, we have nothing before us. What is happening right now is the process of of the project sponsor preparing or the preparing for the project sponsor, HHT, preparing for the project sponsor to state the environmental impact statement. Right now, we are in, as as the public is, a fact-finding stage. We don't have anything to respond to. So in the same way that you don't have all the contours, we don't have all of the contours. So what I've, the process I've just described of communicating with parks and with HHT about what our concerns are as we, as the project unfolds and we want to see that they are addressing and their research gets addressed, that's where we are right now, is documenting that. Understand that at some stage, this may come to us. We may have, because we are considered and interested and involved agency, we may have discretionary, be asked to take discretionary action. This is as we approach any project, we have to be very careful not to prejudge without facts. So when we have something before us to respond to, then we can respond. Right now, we don't have the DG EIS. So you're not going to see this board or any land use board taking a position on a proposed application without an application.
So I I understand that. Thank you for explaining that.
And how are we on?
Why is Cold, the village of Cold Spring listed as an agency that's supporting a project on the Hudson Highlands Pure Trail website?
We don't control their page. They put, they they put our seal there, but that doesn't mean that.
They down it. We're in a state of indecision or not having enough information to decide one way or the other.
So it's actually, it is, our seal is on that, oh, on that partners page.
Yes.
You know what, Andrew? That's actually a really good point. That's a really good point.
I think that, well, just to say, I think the page is indicating, it's supposed to indicate a steering committee or a, or whatever that, that kind of of all of these different agencies that are involved. But I think it may be, it may incorrectly indicate a, give a perception of support that isn't, that isn't the case. And so I think it's like, really important for the village to be in these committees and to be like at the table to be engaged in all these, these processes. But that doesn't, that doesn't show that it's taking a position one way or the other. It's just a, it's a engagement of being at the table. And so it shouldn't, that page shouldn't give that perception to people.
And I think that's fair. And that's reasonable feedback for us to include, include in our communication. I will say that when the visitor, when the fear trail did its visitor management event at Duchess Manor, the village declined to be a sponsor of that event, designed to be a, declined to be a participant. We declined to lead because it's not our, it's not our project, right? And it's not our place to be presenting or receiving there. So and we declined to have our seal on advertising, et cetera. There were lots of questions there, but I think we got the meat of what you were looking for. Okay.
Thank you for
Sure. And and there is, if you want information about that two thousand, I just pulled the file on that two thousand twelve sidewalk project to look at again. So I have it if you're, if you can foil it to have a look at. Hello, how are you?
Academy. A number of things. First, like question, going back to the fines you were imposing on the endpoints. I'd question legality of creating fines during the process. I think that's something you might want to run through the attorney. Second, you stated that the village has an easement in the entry to Dockside.
No, Parks, Parks has an easement.
But Parks has the easement with with Laura Bergman.
With Laura Bergman, not the village. That's right. I'm sorry for the lack of clarity.
That's something that should be made very clear, because we would have a lot more standing as what goes on the park as as relating to the pure trail. On regarding what what Andrew has said about our logo being or whatever, yeah, I guess I call it a logo on their on their materials. I think maybe if you're looking at that separately, that's nothing much, but it's it's part of their PR. You know, you know, of actually having our name and having every other logo on there. And if we don't really support it or don't have enough to support it, aren't supporting this iteration of the project, then I think it should be, we should have that taken down because it's, we're not supporting it. I mean, we still want to be at the table and we should be at the table because it's going to affect this village more than anyone else, though. You know, and then I think with people and what I've heard and what everyone was wanting, and and I think you can respond it. I know you have to be a little bit careful, but I think that the board can actually get their position on on this whole project. I don't think we have to wait for the GIS to say wow, this whole project is coming through. You see it all. It's all laid out for you. You've heard all the comments they've made on it as a a world-class park. And you know, everybody knows where it's going. And as elected officials, I think that it would be really good for the people to know where you stand on this project and whether you support it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I welcome to Academy. Great. Just related to what Andrew was talking about, and I was saying, the village board too. In fact, Hudson Highlands Pure Trail does refer to partners on their website. There's a partners page. It describes the role of these partners who they, you know, list. And we're, we're among some, you know, wanted colleagues here, Riverkeeper, Open Space Institute, referred to as you know, partners of Hudson Highlands Pure Trail in their, in their leadership and conservation efforts and that the park is being managed, that this park project is being managed collaboratively and by, you know, by these partners. So I I think it's, it is misleading, I think, at at that.
Thank you for it. Let me just, since you've spoken once, let me just see if there's anybody online and then I'll come back to you. Okay, Dave? Does anyone online have a comment or question? I can't see if my hands are it. Michael, are you raising your hand?
It's just the.
No, okay, it's the pointer. Okay, and I will take.
Now we'd see it on the right.
Yeah, there's no hat race.
I'll go to John, then we'll come back to you, Dave.
Johnson, the county manager in Cold Spring. It's really hard to be really good perspective on this because I've been everybody's corner over the years, working for everybody around here, West Side Village, school. And first, I was very much in favor of it. And it sounded great in its ideal form, but when you look at it closely, it's just way overwhelming. It's adding insult to the problem, insult to the injury of the problem we already have of the numbers that we're dealing with right now. It's just going to increase the numbers dramatically. So I'm scared of this right now. That's Don Zouick speaking now, past president of Los Twenty Points Citizens Association for thirty-five years or so. We have an organization that has been a cooperative friends group to state parks and trying to explain to some of the board members of our Los Twenty Points Citizens Association, who signed on as partners also, that we're not a rubber stamp. And because we're, we're having internal conversations, we're trying to get it on the agenda to discuss, discuss it from Los Twenty Point Citizens Association, the, you know, people who's made up cities in Cold Spring. So we're working on that, that angle and not, sort of not really happening way, it's been presented as huge to state by, they've managed. So that's that. So we're, we're going to try and take a close look at this, all citizens, of course, I'm sure. I've been, opinion, getting opinions from almost everybody I run into. And it's, it's, I bring it up, sometimes other people bring it up and this needs to be brought out in public, open comment. And it's been stifled the last couple of meetings. And I just want to say, the, the one at the firehouse, it was so obvious, up to Duchess Manor, you know what I'm talking about, one firehouse, said Cold Spring Leadership requested this meeting in the letter that Amy Cassell, the executive director, said that Cold Spring Leadership requested this meeting where people like probably can have a comment, you know, they kind of went in the form of a structure. So you were there, I mean, maybe weren't, but I can't remember. It was, it was, it wasn't really a forum for, like, some of the forums that previous attended at Firehouse or Downhole or wherever. So it was kind of like structured. So really didn't welcome opinion, even though I stated that, you know, deceptive.
Yeah, let's, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, let's, thank you for pointing that out. I meant to, I meant to raise that and I'd forgotten it when I was, um, speaking earlier. So let me tell you what we requested and then you'll know what you got. What we request.
The Cold Spring Board or we, uh, Cold Spring Leadership?
This Board of Trustees requested that as, um, the traffic and planning study was being developed, that there be Cold Spring specific comment periods. Because it was being presented and discussed as the whole project. And we asked for a drill down conversation on parking and shuttles for the village. The format that they chose was their own. So we didn't have any planning around that. And obviously the way we run public sessions is different than that. So I'm hoping that as we have conversations with them about how they go forward, presentations can be made in a format more like this, so that there is an opportunity for actual questions. That, that's what you, what people are looking for, I think, is, is engagement and opportunity to ask questions in that way. So that was not our event and it's not the format we asked for, but we were, I think three of us were, four of us were, were there to listen and see the comments that people were putting forward, but that was a Fjord Trail event. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Um, I think Dave wanted to.
It doesn't follow, I, I guess, you know, you're not going to answer the question of where you stand, which I think is. Representative of, of the village for you not to give your, you know, where you actually stand on this. Um, I'm disappointed that you won't actually make a commitment to that. Um, yeah, I, I guess that's maybe what I, the other thing is, we talked about a venue and to actually get public, uh, to hear what the public is saying. Um, yeah, I, is, is there going to be anything? Is there any intention as of any discussion about actually listening to the people? Because in these drill down sections that you're having or they're having, and you can go to the firehouse and then you have these statements and people aren't hearing of, of a person and not agreeing or hearing an argument, they're hearing whatever this person in front of them who's part of the HHFT is telling them and then they move along. And that's how these are all designed. Every one of their meetings is designed not to hear the public as a whole. They want to just kind of, you know, divide and conquer. And I think that's what they're doing. I think what the village needs to do is have, is to have a, a meeting in which everyone can come and voice their opinion on this. So you know where they're at. If you don't, um, I think you should as, as representatives know where the village is at. And the only way to find that out is to actually have a meeting and to actually hear people's, you know, express their opinion.
Thank you.
Somebody else. I did, I know I didn't use up my three minutes. Try to see input. So, uh, LWRP, how can the village? What, what can the village board do to move forward the LWRP? And I'm asking this because it's important. Under state law, if we have an LWRP, we have a waterfront consistency review then implemented as part of our code. And that LWRP plus that chapter will protect us and give, strengthen our position and, and truly give us standing in opposition to any state agency. I mean, that, that is the law. So what does the village need to do to move forward with that? Because this is, we acknowledge this is a long process. Um, so, so.
And you know, the long process that went into developing the LWRP because you were both trustee and a, and a participant. And as you know.
I meant the project, the Fjord Trail.
Yes, I know. I'm talking about the LWRP. So you know that it was not finalized and not adopted because the zoning code chapter was not completed.
Yep.
So this board took what remained from the previous board. And we have actually done the work of building out a mixed use, a working group is built, is building out the mixed use proposal that wasn't finished and the residential portions that weren't finished, um, and the protection of Mayor's Park, which wasn't finished. So that working group is finalizing it, where it's work and will come, that, that proposal for the completion of the chapter one thirty-four, the zoning chapter will happen between March and June. So once that chapter is approved, and it was a lot of work to get it done, it was left in quite a state. Once that is approved, then we have standing to, um, approve, have the LWRP approved by the Department of State. Well, it's just, it's just real. It's just real.
Can you be more specific on that?
I'm sorry. There's one person speaking right now. Thank you.
Well, now there's two, you and her.
Yeah, Dave, it doesn't work like that.
No, not anymore. Not anymore. Dave, please stop. Just.
That's not very nice. You're serving.
Okay, does anyone else?
One more, just to clarify, because I don't understand this, but, um, I know the zoning board, the planning board, they have jurisdiction over land. But who has jurisdiction beyond, I guess nine D is state or is it county?
Would you be on nine D after the river?
No, the actual highway, because what's going to happen?
It's a state road.
One of my concerns is, and I don't know how would we, how we might use this to kind of question what their motive or what their, how well they're looking at all the problems before they start and launch into this. But right now, there've been points where traffic on nine D at the light is backed up to Bosco Bell. And I can only imagine that getting worse and worse and worse. And there's no other place for people to go if they come by car. And one thought is, you know, they come by car, we have all these instructions on where to go and everything, but they just use their GPS and they arrive in Cold Spring at the light, if they even get to the light. And then they're going down Main Street, which is a cul-de-sac.
So, so I'm going to stop you.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. And you're exactly right. No, it's not that it's not the place. You're exactly right. And your concerns are valid. And that is among the, yeah, document, that's among the concerns that we need to raise.
Yeah.
To ensure that the process of studying traffic, et cetera, is complete, given the changed scale of the project.
And the time period when they study it, like for instance, if they're studying it now, this is the lowest volume of traffic you're going to get.
Yeah, I don't know that that's Fjord Trail, the traffic counters that are there, but you're right. That's, that's among the concerns is as you're doing, as you're developing this draft.
Yeah.
General environmental impact statement, are you looking at peak times?
Yeah.
Are you looking at peak seasons?
Beef season.
And are you looking in the right places too? One of the, one of the things that, that was raised is that, um, uh, the entrance to the Cornish Estate, um, I can't think of the trailing. But the counts weren't taken there and right, they were taken at Breakneck, but not there. And that obviously is a huge gateway that was left out. That needs to be revisited.
Would be requested.
And because of the mountains, you've got eighty-four where people can come across, say people can come from another side of county or they come up eighty-four or whatever. It's, Cold Spring is very limited on how many accesses points we have.
There are the concerns, for sure.
Good. Thanks.
Hi Sheila.
Hi.
Um, and. Say your name and address.
Oh, sorry, to the right. That's why you knew me.
Your address?
Um, Lane Gate Road, three five six Lane Gate Road. So I'm not of the village.
Okay.
What my question is about. I, I like this talk about making meetings more, um, you know, give and take between the people and the people in charge and, and, and I would love if the, this project is so big.
Yeah.
This town is so small.
Yeah.
Um, I would love if you guys would somehow broaden out to Phillips Town in your meetings. I know it's really important for people who live in the village, but it's also important for all of us. And.
I know. I'm sorry, what do you want us to open to the, because our.
About the full pure trail.
They've all been open to the public and we have taken comment from the folks in the village first and then the village beyond.
I guess I'm talking about the town board. I mean, you know, just.
So you haven't, go ahead, go ahead.
It's just, um, I think it's, it's a good reminder too that, um, these are also really important points to be bringing to the town board. So like, we are really focused on this. We want the town board to be really focused on it too. And to hear the concerns of both Cold Spring residents who are residents of Phillips Town and other, you know, Phillips Town residents, to be hearing people's perspectives on, on Fjord Trail. So I would say don't, don't see this board as the only one that is listening. Um, we know that, you know, the town board wants to listen to you too. And, um, it doesn't take a joint session for that to happen. It, you know, it can be happening at the, the, the town board as well.
Also, um, we have, uh, Mayor Foley has repeatedly asked them to, um, include Nelsonville. And they don't. So, you know, this is going to impact everybody and everybody needs to say what they need to say to get it.
I have asked in multiple public sessions to have.
Mayor had been included in communications. I have physically added her to email threads. She has been removed.
Um, we have asked directly to have them invited many times. Um, and I think it's important for Nelsonville to be included in these conversations because the Nelsonville Trail system is a, is a backdoor entrance to the larger trail system. Ripple effects are real.
Oh.
Um, and it's not like there's a magic line at town hall that stops visitors. So, um, that's, but that's, these are things that we also need help from the public advocating for. With Nelsonville is, you know, its mayor is asking, but folks in Nelsonville need to be making these requests as well. Um, and all of you from our village and in Phillips Town are concerned about those things. You need to be advocating with us for things like that. And I would say, you know, have these conversations at the town board as well. We're not, we're not the only, we're not the only repository for, for, for these comments. It's important that all of the boards are hearing you.
You're here.
Um, any, any, oh, hi.
Hi.
It can't be, the, a meeting doesn't end without Irene.
The Irene P is a, um, Sixth Holding Avenue. Um, regarding the Firehouse Educational Night that they had, um, and to the point about the nine D traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, something I brought up, you know, with this future or not, uh, something such as how do we get the state or the county to work together with the village or with Phillips Town, um, to get maybe, you know, weakened crossing guards at these specific spots? Because the quality of life that I have, just being able to walk over to Food Town from where I live is really very hard and gets dangerous. And, you know, that's a quality of life issue. Food Town is our supermarket. You know, and so the same thing with Academy Street has, uh, the church there, which is also a food bank. Okay. And so I think it's Saturday mornings is when the food bank, you know, which has appropriate traffic. Whatever, cars parked there. But then on the Saturday, when it's tons of visitors coming, okay? People are having a hard time getting to that food bank on a Saturday morning. Okay. So somehow, I, I don't know if it's Department of Transportation. I need, I need someone to tell me what to do to get help from the state or the county to get some kind of help with this traffic situation, whether it's police presence, which everyone doesn't want more police presence or like crossing guards or, you know, again mitigating the heavy traffic in an area that, like you're saying, it's one way in, one way out, you know, and it's, and or it's bucked up against residential areas that don't have a lot of flow in and out of the streets because of the parking up against nine D and then the traffic on nine D. Right? So again, you have to kind of go out more than halfway of your car before you can even see both ways, you know? So it's, I can't imagine crossing. So that's one thing I brought up. And the other question I have is, and I don't know if anybody can answer it really, but if all this Fjord Trail stuff is state property, is it sort of like an eminent domain issue where they can be nice to us? But not really give a damn.
There you go.
There you go. So, you know, what would you do without the mitigation of, what is it? The Hudson, the scenic Hudson, whoever that is doing this?
So Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail is a subsidiary five oh one C three of scenic Hudson. So they're their own five oh one C three.
So since it is state-owned property or whatever, under the domain of the state, they, as they did with this bridge going over to Breakneck Bridge years ago, years before even like this magically appeared in front of us that, hey, why don't we do this bridge? You know, because no one wants it on Bear Street. They had pre-planned that. Okay. So it's like an eminent domain question. They can be as nice to us, but they don't have to take. They don't have to take our input, hence excluding Nelsonville, right? Purposely, they legally don't have to even include them. They're being nice on.
So we're talking about different things here. Eminent domain is a federal action. It takes private property for public good.
Right.
That's, that's not this.
Right. I'm only using it as a comparison.
Right. But it's a completely different, it's a completely different process. The, the concern that I have, and I think others share, is that the state can declare itself exempt from local land use, right? That's what I was saying earlier about, about the balancing test and that being a concern. The, what we need to put in writing as part of this larger conversation that we're having is the idea that, yes, you are the state and we are a village that needs to live in the midst of what you're deciding to. This is why not losing the place at the table is very important. So we continue to have input because they could say, yeah, you know what? We're exempt. Right now, we think about things like, if you want folks to get from the train station to Dockside, which is yours, you're going to have to pass over public streets, right? And public sidewalks that we own and we maintain. So what does that look like long-term? What does that look like from a budgetary standpoint? What, what contribution is the, the development entity going to make toward maintaining those sidewalks? Because we don't, right, the village, the village can't take care of that kind of impact on its own.
Right.
So they can say, the state could say, we are exempt. They can make the argument that they are exempt. We are asking them not to. We are asking them to say, in the same way that we as a village are exempt from our own review, we still talk to the historic district review board and get guidance on things like taking down the fence or the installation of the tree, um, the, the tree pit guards, right? We still take guidance from them so that we're working, we're, we're, we're working within the boundaries that you all are expected, right? You, you are asked to put in an application to the HDRB when you modify your house.
Yes.
So should the HDRB not have a voice in this giant project? That's one of the things that needs to be in writing is the request to say not just the planning board, not just the village board, but you're operating in our historic district. And that's meaningful to us. And the people who live here have made investment in the venture that it is preserving it, right? And so, so should you.
So my follow-up question, where earlier it was mentioned like perhaps providing letters of concern or guidance? So where, like, where can the energy really best be spent? Because can the energy be spent on refusing the project? Because I, I'm not clear that it can be. So saying we don't want the project, I, I am not clear if like we're past that. Because of just again, the, the vagueness of everything, I don't know what point we're, we're past. We cannot say, because we have no place to say it, no, thank you. You've changed your mind. No, thank you. So where can we be agitators? Where can we say, all right, you're going to do this? Not just can you please and we need, but this has to be in balance with this. Or again, is it just request?
So I think you need to be advocating with the lead agency.
Okay.
With the state. Um, and all of their contact information is available on our website.
Advocating for what I think is a problem such as we need more traffic mitigation or advocating for, I want you, I, I demand that you include Nelsonville and, you know, or all of the above.
And it's, that's what's important for you and you want to be advocating for. Advocate for the things that are important for you collectively. We will advocate from a municipal perspective, but I think it is very important for individuals to be making their cases as well. We are, so as we go forward, the, 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 sort of the big time. the, 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 sort of the big time. You're not gonna like the answer to this, but the big, the big time is after the DG EIS is released. But that doesn't mean that we can't create opportunities as a community to have community conversations prior. So, as, as Fjord Trail puts out its study on, I don't know, let's choose one of them, uh, trail alignment through the village. That conversation hasn't been had yet. When it is on the table, we can have a public conversation. I think it's perfectly reasonable to say, have a public meeting in which the village, the, excuse me, the residents, you, you tell us and we communicate on a summary of those comments. That's totally appropriate, but you should be doing your own advocating as well.
But I really second that because I think, so we, we really appreciate hearing from you. It is both like you are informing, you're telling us things that we haven't thought of. That happens every time that we hear public comment and, um, and that's really important. Um, but it's also that, you know, we're, we're some voices and we have a, like, we have footing as the, the village board of trustees, but but like the voice of the village acting in- independently from the board is also really important. And, and so like you saying this here and then you saying, you know, giving your, your perspective in other places, I think is, is um uh reflects how big of an issue this is for the village. And so, just to say, it's really appreciated. And I think that like, I think it's a great idea to say, if there isn't the right venue in this process for getting that kind of input, then we can, then creating that to get input on each of these steps. Being able to collect it and pass it along.
We record all of our meetings, right? Minutes are taken and produced.
And we could send them, send these meeting minutes um to the Fjord Trail and, and say, you know, I, I know that there is representation here at the meeting, but in written, uh, that written copy and, and send it along and say, you know, this is what the public is saying. Be useful.
Mike Bowman online has had a scan raised for a while.
And Heidi as well.
Yeah, hi, uh, Mike Bowman, Nelsonville, can you hear me? I just wanted to kind of touch upon some of the things said earlier. I, I do think it's important that the board go on record either supporting or not supporting the current incarnation of the project, uh, given that it was changed so drastically since twenty seventeen. Um, I also, um, you know, I would, I'm very alarmed that they have uninvited Nelsonville from the table. Uh, I mean, uh, the fact, the fact that um, there's been such lack of transparency and just lack of good faith in this entire process, especially in the last few months, uh, I, I don't know, it really raises alarm bells. And the fact that the state is now kind of, you know, the, the owner of the project or lead agency could supersede anything to do with the Village of Cold Spring. Uh, uh, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see where it's gonna end up, especially given that the one section at the Breakneck Connector, they found, uh, you know, no impact and they're building a bridge in probably one of the most scenic and sensitive historic areas of the entire nation. Um, so just a few thoughts. And I, I do want to just reiterate that I do think it's important that all elected officials uh, give an opinion, either, you know, yea or nay on the, the current proposal. Thank you.
Nice to hear from you, Mike. Heidi?
Well, I just wanted to second what Mike's saying about um including Nelsonville and, and as you folks mentioned and really greatly appreciated, um, it's important for people of Nelsonville to speak up that we don't like not being included. And uh, I'm expressing that view, but also I'm just wondering um if, because there's so much uh concern kind of percolating amongst people throughout the town, I think, I'm wondering if um it would be possible in the same way that Cold Spring had asked uh for the meet, essentially had asked the Fjord Trail um sponsors to present at the firehouse and not, not that that meeting necessarily went the way Cold Spring wanted it to or in the format, but at, I'm wondering if Cold Spring and Nelsonville and the town of Phillips Town could ask the Fjord Trail for a public meeting at wit- that is more open format. Where, and they could say no, they could certainly say no. Um, but we could ask. And if, if the answer is no, that's kind of tough, we could hold the meeting without them. I mean, i- i- in other words, uh, we could have the meeting and if they choose not to show, so be it. But kind of like, um, I mean, I've personally found the Duchess Manor meeting to be like, really like a kindergarten project. Um, but we could ask for an open format meeting where we get to express our views, not in a disorderly fashion, but in a very orderly fashion, um, very respectfully and um but yet make a public record of what people's views are. And, and again, either they can answer or not answer. Um, but, you know, we could hold the meeting, hopefully they attend.
So, we are doing something similar to that next week where the boards of the town and the two villages are convening together related to um, Central Hus- Hudson billing fiasco and the findings of the um Public Service Commission. Um, so this is certainly not without precedent. I think that might be, I don't know, others who've been around longer may, may know if, if all three boards have met in joint session prior, but um I, I don't think what you're proposing is unreasonable. Hudson is not coming to that one. So. Um, but, but we will be having it for the purpose of creating a, a public record. So it doesn't seem unreasonable. The other board members have response to Heidi's suggestion?
I think we're hearing that request from multiple members of the audience, so I think it is a good idea because, you know, to everyone's point, like, if there isn't the space for public comment to be heard and shared, then you don't have it all in one place as Mayor Miranda, former Mayor Miranda said. So, um, I think that that is a good idea.
So that's something that we can propose to, and, and actually Mayor Winwood and I had talked about it in a, in a general way last week. That's something we can certainly propose. We would need, clearly, this is not the space. We'd need to get Haldane or that, that the Haldane Small Jump has worked for big town board meetings before, so we have to see if we can get the space, but I think it's a great idea. So, this is, so you guys have already commented once. It is nine thirty-eight. I'm gonna ask you to please, um I'm gonna ask you to send it in because it's, it's getting late. I'm gonna ask, this is gonna go on for a long time. To send additional comments in writing, um. No, I'm gonna ask you to send it in writing. It's nine, it's nine thirds, nine forty at this point.
Could I ask you folks that we still have business to do? Could I ask you to take your conversation outside?
Thank you.
Again.
Sixty-eight thirteen and the amount of ninety-two thousand sixty-six dollars and four cents.
Um, I had no, I had no modifications in the minutes. Anyone else?
Motion to approve the minutes of January fourth. Do you want them together or apart?
Uh, if we have no changes, I don't see any reason why not to keep them together.
Uh, the motion to approve the minutes of January fourth and January eleventh of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, now.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Thanks to you, Andrew. Nice to have you back.